This council is present. Council will now come to order. Members will take their seats. Visitors will retire their seats outside the rails. Before proceeding, I would ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate. All of us in Philadelphia City Council extends our deepest condolences on the recent passing of our esteemed colleague, Council Chief Clerk Michael Decker. I want to ask for everyone to stand so we can have a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. Council Chief Clerk Michael Decker has dedicated service spanning over thirty-six years in city council and has left an indelible mark on our city. Michael was a diligent public servant and a cornerstone in city council. His commitment and invaluable contribution to the efficient functioning of our legislative body will be remembered with gratitude and respect. He became chief clerk starting in September of two thousand nine under the late council president Ann Werner. He served under three council presidents: Ann Werner, former council president Darrell Clark, and myself until his passing. Our thoughts and prayers are with Michael's family, friends, and colleagues. Michael will be laid to rest tomorrow, March the first, and we share in the sorrow of his loss and will forever cherish the memories of his unwavering dedication to the betterment of Philadelphia. I would like to thank Elizabeth McCullough for her willingness to serve as interim chief clerk during our transition. At this moment, I will ask for Father Mark Conagonas, father of the Saint John Contituus Catholic Church. He is here today as the guest of our council member, Driscoll. I will ask for all members and guests to please rise. And I want to also thank Pastor Mark for also doing a special prayer for our beloved chief clerk, Michael Decker.
Thank you very much for having me here today. I thank Councilman Driscoll for inviting me, and I bring greetings from my parish of Saint John Cantus and the citizens of Bridesburg. Our prayer this morning is dedicated to Michael Decker and his memory and his soul. Let us pray. O God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. We come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this city council session. Assist with your spirit of council and fortitude these council members of the city of Philadelphia. Unite our lawmakers beyond personal agendas, fostering wisdom and understanding for the betterment of our city. May they always seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. Grant that they may be enabled by your powerful protection to lead our city with honesty and with integrity. Let the deliberations of this governing body stir thought-provoking ideas that positively shape our local government. As we embark on this journey, may your guiding hand be evident in every decision made. Grant us steadfastness and respect for diversity as we serve together for community development. We pray this as we pray all prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen.
The chair thanks the pastor with invocation. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February the fifteenth of two thousand twenty-four. The chair recognizes council member Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four be approved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February the fifteenth of two thousand twenty-four stand approved. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the journal is approved. The next order of business is request for leave of absences, and the chair recognizes council member Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Thank you. The chair recognizes council member Kendra Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Thank you very much. The chair now recognizes council member Catherine Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and as required by law subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill on or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Is there a second? Second. It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters stated by council member Catherine Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in the chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of city council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate your taking the time to join us as we attend the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. At this time, the chair recognizes council member Cindy Bass, who will present a resolution honoring Renee Chanel Fatah for her unwavering dedication and commitment to excellence throughout her esteemed career. With Renee Chanel Fatah and those accompanying her, please join the council member at the
Well, good morning, good morning, good morning.
Council member, before you start your presentation, the council member will be joined by council member Kendra Brooks, Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson, council member Jamie Gardiere, council member Kathy Lazada, council member Rue Landau, and council member Nina Amaa.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to start again. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We also want to invite anyone who is a part of Renee's Village, is a member of the Links, who is in journalism, or any of the many other areas that Renee is being recognized for today, to please feel free to join us this morning. And as we gather here today to honor Renee, we stand at the intersection of two significant observances: Black History Month and Women's History Month. This is the perfect time to reflect on the profound contributions of Black women throughout history, whose resilience, courage, and brilliance have shaped our world in numerous ways, from being broadcasted as a reporter to serving as leadership of numerous organizations to practicing law. Today, we come together to honor and celebrate the achievements of one remarkable woman, Renee Chanel Fatah. Her impact transcends boundaries and inspires us all. In recognizing her accomplishments, we not only pay tribute to her individual journey, but also acknowledge the countless narratives of strength, leadership, and excellence within the community of Black women. And I do want to say this morning, as I was driving in on the radio, I heard a song, and it really crystallized this moment for me. And it was from Teddy Pendergrass, and it was somewhat, somebody told me to deliver this message. And I thought about journalism and how important it is to not just get the story, but get the story right, and also to have diversity in that newsroom. And so I want to take this as an opportunity to say on behalf of all of us that we thank you, Renee, for all of your contributions to journalism here in Philadelphia and moving the city forward. So, that being said, whereas as an American journalist and former co-anchor of the WCAU NBC Ten News, Renee Chanel Fatah has served three decades, proving to be a beacon of journalistic integrity. With ease, she illuminated the stories of our communities with compassion, insight, and professionalism, and...
Whereas Renee Chanel Fatah has demonstrated leadership, bringing her perspective to each story while simultaneously embodying objectivity. She is an inspiration to her colleagues and viewers alike, earning a Master's of Arts in Journalism from the University of Missouri. After a few years co-anchoring the noon broadcast, she was promoted to the four PM, six PM, and eleven PM news where she spent her next eight years co-anchoring, and...
Whereas through film, Renee Chanel Fatah has helped to voice those who have been impacted by dementia, directing a documentary entitled "In Our Right Mind: Alzheimer's and Other Dementias Impact on Communities of Color," in which she bravely showcased her own journey with her aunt who suffered from the disorder, and...
Whereas Renee Chanel Fatah undoubtedly left a unique mark throughout her journey. She has shown intelligence and grace under pressure and continues to look in the direction of others' lives with interest in stories that impact women as well as health disparities because of racial and economic inequality.
Whereas Renee Chanel Fatah has spoken before universities, audiences, church congregations, and civic organizations about the issues concerning health disparities, law, education, and ethics, and currently serves as a trustee of John Hopkins University and a former trustee of Springside Chestnut Hill Academy, the Philadelphia Museum of Art, the Philadelphia Lawyers for Social Equity, served on the Board of the Philadelphia Zoo, and as a member of the Penn Town Links, Inc., and...
Whereas Renee Chanel Fatah's most notable stories included political conventions and the school shooting massacre in Littleton, Colorado, her hometown. She was inducted into the Broadcast Pioneers of Philadelphia Hall of Fame in two thousand nine, and...
Whereas Renee Chanel Fatah earned her bachelor's degree in political science from John Hopkins, where she received the Black Alumni President's Award and earned her career in law by first graduating from the University of Pennsylvania Law School, where she received the Alumni Award of Merit when working at Hughes Hubbard &amp; Reed in New York City and clerking for the late Judge Damon Keith on the United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit. Therefore, by virtue of this citation, the council of the city of Philadelphia hereby honors Renee Chanel Fatah for being an active member of the community and an inspiration to countless individuals. And I just want to add that if this body, if the folks in this building have really learned nothing else in the last couple of weeks, what we've learned is to give our flowers to our friends while they are here to smell them. And so it is, you know, it is with great honor and pride that I'm able to recognize my friend Renee Chanel Fatah and thank her for all of the work that she's done on behalf of the city of Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Renee Chanel Fatah for remarks. Congratulations.
Thank you. I am speechless, which is no easy feat for somebody who is both a lawyer and a journalist. I always say the only people who like to hear themselves talk more than lawyers are journalists, and yet I am struggling to find the words to let you know how much this means to me, to be standing here with my sisters, to see President Johnson, to see, you know, I look out, I don't even know where to begin, and this is dangerous because I know you have a full agenda, but I do want to say just a few words. First, let me just start off by saying how sorry I am to hear about the passing of Mike Decker. Because I worked so many years in journalism, I know how important he was to this institution and what a loss it is. So it breaks my heart to hear that loss. My heart is full today. I struggle to find the words, in part because this recognition is coming from city council. I so admire and respect the sacrifices that you all make for this city, the fact that you're public servants, that you give of your time because you care and you love Philadelphia. As you heard from this, I felt like my life was flashing before me, but, you know, I'm not from Philadelphia. I was born in Ohio, I grew up in Colorado, I went to school in Baltimore, I practiced law in New York, in Detroit. When I went into TV, I, you know, got a journalism degree in Missouri, because that's how they say it out there. You know, I worked in TV markets in L.A. and Atlanta and New York and New Jersey. And I say all that to say that over all those years, there is no city I love more, no place I would rather be than right here in Philadelphia. You know, and I promise, I'm not going to go on much longer, but I do have to say, I really feel like I owe this city so very much. Philadelphia gave me my law degree, well, no, 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 I earned that law degree at the University of Pennsylvania Law School. It just happened here. But certainly Philadelphia gave me my career. I can't tell you how rewarding it is to walk down the street, or even this morning, when young people come up to me and say, hey, I grew up watching you, or they were watching when I was pregnant with my girls, who are now twenty and twenty-five, so that lets you know how long ago it was, or, you know, people will remind me of the fact of time when I fainted on the air covering the Olympics in Atlanta. People don't forget things. So, you know, you gave me my career, not just that career, but I just finished Philadelphia Lawyers at Social Equity. City council was so supportive and instrumental. Councilman Jones, thank you so much for the support you gave our organization in giving people second chances. I was at Senior Law Center, the amazing thing city council did supporting us. Councilwoman Brooks, my God, the things you do around housing and tenant that support our seniors. You know, I could go on and on, and like you say, you can see I found my words, but I owe this city. This is where I met and married my husband. This is where we raised our kids. My parents, my God, after forty years of living in Colorado, they moved here, and they both, this is their final resting place, here in Philadelphia. So Philadelphia is home, and this has made me just want to sort of rededicate myself to helping however I can in this amazing time when we're being led by this incredibly diverse city council, more diverse than ever, and diverse across the board, and being led by a mayor, who, my God, my girls can look at her and see themselves in her. This is an incredible time, so thank you. I'm gonna stop, like I said, I obviously found my words, and then some. Thank you very much. This means more to me than I can say, but I try. Thank you. Thank you so very much.
At this time, the chair recognizes council member Phillips, who will present a resolution recognizing the tenth graders at Hill Freeman World Academy for being featured in the HBO documentary Stand Up and Shout: Songs from a Philly High School. Will Ezekiel Thurman and those accompanying him, please join the council member at the
Wow. Hill Freeman, welcome to City Hall.
And the council member is joined by council member Catherine Gilmore Richardson, council member Driscoll, council member Squillen, council member Jamie Gardiere.
All right. As Hill Freeman comes onto the rostrum, I just want to briefly say that I am proud to say that in a city where too often young people have been noted as not being as engaged, being as responsible, we have a group of responsible young people who are doing the right thing, thanks to the leadership of their principal and their outstanding music instructor, Mr. Thurman, and Principal Majewski, thank you. But I just want to briefly say that I had the privilege to sit through the concert that Hill Freeman World Academy did, Stand Up and Shout, last year. And when I tell you, y'all killed it, y'all killed it. I mean, these kids got energy and excitement and talent. So today, we're going to be recognizing them for not only doing this incredible concert, but having this incredible, so incredible to the point that HBO did a documentary recognizing all their musical talents, right? In addition to that, this school, thanks to the support of Principal Majewski and Mr. Thurman, who leads the initiative, has some world-class musical instruments as well as other technology that allows these young people to flourish. So I want to say that today, we are pleased to support and celebrate all of your artistic and creative endeavors, and I'm happy that we're able to present you to the city of Philadelphia, all the way from Mount Airy, one nine one five oh. And we're beyond excited to say thank you all so much. So we're gonna kick it off. Afterwards, Principal Mr. Thurman is gonna give some remarks about what you all have done, but I just want to say we're so proud of y'all. All right. So today's resolution, we're recognizing, today, we'll start off with our resolution, which will be followed by other council members. We're recognizing the tenth graders at Hill Freeman World Academy for being featured in the HBO, oh, ten, some twelve, right? Yeah, there we go. We're recognizing the entire Hill Freeman World Academy for being featured in the HBO documentary Stand Up and Shout: Songs from a Philly High School. Whereas the city of Philadelphia is pleased and proud to support and celebrate the artistic and creative endeavors of young Philadelphians, and whereas students at Hill Freeman World Academy have demonstrated an impressive penchant and talent for songwriting and musicship, the music they have written and produced beautifully portrays their nuanced experiences as Philadelphia's youth.
And whereas their laudable musical undertaking is featured in the HBO documentary Stand Up and Shout: Songs from a Philly High School, their documentary underscores the importance of their artistic expression and highlights their awe-inspiring musical creations. And whereas the students' immense success so early in their musical careers demonstrates the importance of adequately funding artistic outlets for students in and out of academic settings, and...
Whereas in all that the students of Hill Freedom World Academy have done, they have furthered the progress of our city of Philadelphia, who through dedication and excellence contribute in a meaningful way to the well-being of their communities through music, art, and film are integral to the functioning wholesomeness of the vibrance of our city. As such, the students of Hill Freedom World Academy are much appreciated, and...
Whereas the council of the city of Philadelphia does hereby extend its sincere gratitude to the students of Hill Freeman World Academy for their extraordinary contribution to our community. We wish them success in the days ahead and extend the sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body. Therefore, be it...
Resolved that the council of the city of Philadelphia recognizes the tenth graders at Hill Freedom World Academy, the tenth and through twelfth, for being featured in the HBO documentary Stand Up and Shout: Songs from a Philadelphia High School.
Further resolved that an engrossed copy be presented to the students of Hill Freeman World Academy, further evidencing the sincere admiration and respect of this legislative
So we will, just before, we were, oh, yes, I just want to say, thank you all for making this happen. The chairman of education, I'm the vice chair of education, Isaiah Thomas, these are the things that we want to see more of in the city of Philadelphia. So you guys are doing the work, continue to do it. I love y'all. Continue to press forward and continue to make not only Knight District proud, but the entire city of Philadelphia proud.
The chair recognizes Ezekiel Thurman for remarks.
Thank you. On behalf of the Hill Freeman World Academy School Community, we'd like to thank council member Phillips and all the council members here, of course, council president Johnson, for this great honor for our amazing twelfth grade students. They were tenth graders. They were 10th graders when the film was, when it was documented, but we want to be really clear. We're so proud of these students. An example, Hill Freeman's program, very unique in that it's not a music class, it's everyone in the 10th grade makes a record, whether they love music or not. And so we have this amazing journey of writing songs, creating music, publishing an album. And HBO, executive produced by John Legend, jumped in for a year and a half filming in the classroom to make Stand Up and Shout. We do want to also acknowledge while we're in this hallowed building, Mayor Parker, she's been a huge advocate and supporter of our program. She's been on albums and recordings with students in videos and actually helped support the program. And of course, her chief of staff, my better half, Tiffany Thurman. But these students certainly stand alone for their talents and abilities. And we encourage everyone in the room, if you have Macs, please see the documentary. It's up and it's streaming worldwide. Feedback coming from Europe, all around. People can't believe the amazing work that our Hill students here in Philly, high school students are doing, leading innovation and change in education. Huge village around the students, gotta give some credit. Thank you to, of course, our school community. Working in public schools takes a deep, deep commitment with lots of hard labor. So first, to an innovative, strong leader of the school, head of school, Principal Anthony Majewski, I'll just give it up for him. We gotta thank Hill Freeman teachers and all teachers. Thank you for the 5% bump yesterday, by the way, everyone who was a part of that. We appreciate it. And we want to thank our staff. You know, we were there, day in and day out, laboring and supporting students. Also, of course, Dr. Watlington, our assistant superintendent, James Gordon, and all the district level staff that supports students every day. We had to go outside the district to do this one because it's so outside the box and different. So we had to rely on nonprofit support. And we've, we were very blessed to find some partners that had deep pockets. And I just want to say, we can never overspend on amazing students who have the future in their hands. And with the last two seconds that I have, we need to acknowledge Hal Reel from World Cafe Live, the founder and president of that venue, has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars over a seven-year span investing into this program, providing his contacts, his, his connections, and his artists, including some really prominent ones that are featured in the film, our teaching artist staff at Hill Freeman. I want to acknowledge Crystal Tight writer Oliver. I want to acknowledge Andrew Lipke and Bethlehem Roberson, who you'll see in the film when you check it out. Also, Hal Reel was joined by David Bradley, who is the head of their education division. And these folks poured into our students. We also have been partnered by Elevate 215 in Spring Point. And I mean, big numbers, not little, small amount, but large amounts of money. We want to acknowledge them. Finally, HBO and John Legend. In addition to making the film, John Legend has donated, along with his partners, Mike Jackson and Tyse DeChlorius, they've donated 100K to the Hill Freeman Records Program to help keep it moving forward. Can we give it up for John Legend and his colleagues, Mike Jackson, Tyse DeChlorius? We want to thank Amy Schatz. She's the award-winning director from HBO that saw this, heard it, and decided to tell the story worldwide. What an exciting thing for our school, for our students. And most recently, a really famous Philadelphian, a guy named Jordan Mylata, who's been in our studio and recorded with our students, and he just donated another 100,000 to our program. We wanted to acknowledge him publicly and thank him. I know I'm over time. Thank you again, council. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, students. We are so honored to have you with us. And God bless.
Council will be at ease. The next order of business is communications. The chair requests that the sergeant-at-arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. The chief clerk will read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession.
To the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to 2147 North Fifth Street in the 7th Councilmatic District in the city of Philadelphia. And a resolution appointing James Aros Jr. to the position of Chief Assessment Officer of the Office of Property Assessment. And an ordinance amending Title IX, Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions of the Philadelphia Code to add a new chapter concerning protections for consumers against unfair methods of competition and unfair or deceptive acts or practices and providing remedies. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to 2903, 2907, and 2925 Cecil Bemore Avenue in the 5th Councilmatic District of the city of Philadelphia. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to 5307 Market Street and 723 North Sedgwick Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District of the city of Philadelphia. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to 61, 65, 77, 23, 24, 44, 49, 51, 53, 55, 57, 67, 73, 78, 89, 93, and 106 Ashmead Street, 1834, 61, and 87 Column Street, 69, 71, 89, 91, 93, and 95 East Worcester Street in the 8th Councilmatic District in the city of Philadelphia. And a resolution approving the 5th Amendment of the redevelopment proposal for the Tioga Urban Renewal Area, being the area generally bounded by Hunting Park Avenue on the north, Broad Street, Germantown Avenue, Vanango Street, 15th Street, Allegheny Avenue, and Germantown Avenue on the east, Glenwood Avenue and Lehigh Avenue on the south, and 23rd Street, Allegheny Avenue, and 22nd Street on the west, including the 5th Amendment to the urban renewal plan, which provides for changes that would make it consistent with the Tioga redevelopment area plan and generally consistent with the most recent comprehensive plan approved by the City Planning Commission of the city of Philadelphia. And pursuant to Sections 4-604 and 2-307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills, 240012, 240020, 240063, 240064, 240065, 240066, and 240086. There are no further communications in my possession, council president.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Councilmember, the council president, I have one privileged resolution, but just I just want to quickly say, with the privileged resolution, we have the, the organization, the University of Pennsylvania's Department School of Medicine, here recognizing Coler Erectal Cancer Awareness Month. So we all can please stand. So I just want to say, thank you.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing March 2024 as Colar Erectal Cancer Awareness Month and promoting the public awareness of the risk of colon cancer.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, council president. Today I offer four resolutions on your behalf, three privileged and one non-privileged.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of the Philadelphia Task Force on Food Insecurity to study and develop proposals, strategies, and recommendations to alleviate hunger and increase access to high-quality food in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
A privileged resolution honoring Kenneth E. Lawrence Jr. on his appointment as board chair at the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, and recognizing Mr. Lawrence for his dedication to improving transit service across the SEPTA network.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
A privileged resolution congratulating the Auden Reed High School Girls Basketball Team for winning the 2024 Public League Championship.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the Defender Association of Philadelphia on the 90th anniversary of the association's founding and recognizing the contributions of the association and its attorneys to Philadelphia's criminal justice system.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardiere.
Thank you, council president. Today I offer three resolutions, one privileged resolution, one non-privileged resolution, and one non-privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you.
One privileged resolution honoring Mr. Abdulrahim Muhammad on the occasion of Black History Month for his contributions to West Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
A non-privileged resolution appointing James Aros Jr. to the position of Chief Assessment Officer of the Office of Property Assessment.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to 5307 Market Street and 723 North Sedgwick Street in the 3rd Councilmatic District.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. Well, the chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas.
Good morning, council president. Good morning, colleagues. Today I offer two resolutions.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the educator of the month, Elaine Estes, a Spanish teacher at Furnace High School who recently participated in the U.S. Olympic Trials as a marathon runner.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the life and legacy of Baba Jo Foster, a community leader in the movement for African-centered education in Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Dr. Joelle Mogerman for her leadership as the first female and first black chief executive officer and president of the Philadelphia Zoo.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Rue Landau.
Good morning, council president and colleagues. I offer today one bill and two privileged resolutions.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Title IX, Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions of the Philadelphia Code to add a new chapter concerning protections for consumers against unfair methods of competition and unfair or deceptive acts or practices and providing remedies, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will refer to the appropriate committee.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Joy Parham Thomas for her impactful contributions to a thriving black food culture in Philadelphia as a chef, culinary educator, and advocate for food justice.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing Philadelphia City Council to conduct hearings to investigate the efficiency, implementation, and enhancement of the outdoor dining program and improve opportunities for restaurants to operate streeterys and sidewalk cafes.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill and one non-privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill and resolution?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of two new light poles and three existing light poles in the vicinity of the southeast and northwest corners of John F. Kennedy Boulevard and North Broad Streets and the northeast corner of John F. Kennedy Boulevard and North Juniper Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing and ratifying the designation of Councilmember Jeffrey Young Jr. as council's representative in connection with an appeal of the decision of the zoning board of adjustment with respect to 1451 North Broad Street and all litigation related thereto.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The chair recognizes Councilmember Lazada.
Good morning, council president. I have no bills and no resolutions this morning.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Good morning, council president. I have four privileged resolutions to introduce today.
A resolution honoring and recognizing the work and accomplishments of Denise Ripley, whose dedication to the city, to community service, and to the housing rights of all have invigorated and supported civic life in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Prudence Powell for her powerful advocacy, love for her community, and her inspiring work to keep families in Philadelphia whole and to provide sanctuary and stability to all.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the life, work, and accomplishments of Rochelle Nicholas Solomon, whose dedication to serving, teaching, and advocating for students and marginalized peoples has improved the lives of people across the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the work and accomplishments of the stadium stompers, whose dedication to advocating for the North, for the North Philadelphia community and for housing rights for all people have helped secure neighborhood stability for communities in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
I have one bill today, council president.
Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
An ordinance amending chapters 11-203 and 11-204 of the Philadelphia Code to impose penalties, applicants for failure to comply with the terms of their permit for the complete and satisfactory replacement of the permanent paving.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas Nick O'Rourke.
Blessings, council president. I have no bills or resolutions introduced today.
The chair recognizes Councilman Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution today.
Will the clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution proclaiming the month of March in 2024 as Irish Heritage Month in the city of Philadelphia and honoring the St. Patrick's Day Observance Association of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Will a clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A res- a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the life and legacy of former Chief Clerk Michael Andrew Decker, our friend, colleague, and dedicated public servant.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer three bills and two non-privileged resolutions.
Will a clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 21-2401 East Norris Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
An ordinance authorizing Pat Oliveri, DBA Pat's King of Steaks, to then from a location in the right-of-way adjacent to Pat's Steak's location in the vicinity of 9th and Wharton Streets, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
An ordinance authorizing Norris Street Holdings LLC to install, own, and maintain a streetery in the right-of-way adjacent to 2401 East Norris Street, Philadelphia, PA 19125-2913, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee?
And a non-privileged resolution also naming Federal Street between 6th and 7th Streets as Bob Pantano Way.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council?
And a non-privileged resolution also naming Chestnut Street between 12th and 13th Streets in the Gaborhood as Michael Hinson Way to honor the life and legacy of Philadelphia's first appointed liaison within the city's LGBTQ+ communities.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for the next consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass?
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions this week.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I offer one privileged resolution.
Will a clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution celebrating the, celebrating the life and honoring the memory of trailblazing physician, researcher, and humanitarian, Dr. Edith Peterson Mitchell.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The next order of business is reports from committees. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports five bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chief Clerk will please read the report.
This is five. Mr. President, I apologize.
It's four.
Five?
Four, four or five.
I have two scripts. One says four, one says five.
It's four. I apologize.
Okay.
One was held. I apologize.
Thank you. No problem. Thank you.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules to which was referred Bill Number 240020, entitled Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Zoning and Planning, all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. And the Committee on Rules to which was referred Bill Number 240064, entitled, "To amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Salmon Street, Ontario Street, Richmond Street, and West Moreland Street, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation." And the Committee on Rules to which was referred Bill Number 240065, entitled, "To amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Holm Avenue, Academy Road, and Willets Road, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation." And the Committee on Rules to which was referred Bill Number 240066, entitled, "To amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of lo- land located within an area bounded by Wood Street, Fourth Street, Vine Street, and Lawrence Street, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation."
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the four bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading of this day of Bills Number 240020, 240064, 240065, and 240066. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll for a report from the Committee on Licenses and Inspections.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspections reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Will the Chief Clerk please read the title of the report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on License and Inspection to which was referred Bill Number 240013, entitled Amending Chapter 9-600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled, "Service and Other Businesses by Adding a New Section Regulating the Hours of Operation of Certain Establishments and Providing for Penalties Within an Area Bounded by East Lehigh Avenue, Kensington Avenue, D Street, East Tioga Street, and Frankfurt Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation."
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 240013.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 240013. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones for a report from the Committee on Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Public Safety offers one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Will a clerk please read the title of the report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Public Safety to which was referred Bill Number 240010, entitled, Amending Chapter 9-5900 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled, "Prohibition on Certain Gambling Machines and Skills Games to Add Additional Prohibitions and Provide for Remedies, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions", respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones?
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading of Bill Number 240010.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 240010. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a report from the Committee on Education.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Education reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chief Clerk will please read the report?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Education to which was referred Bill Number 240007, entitled, "Amending the Philadelphia Code to Add a New Chapter 21-3400, entitled Youth Name, Image, and Likeness Protection to Establish Provisions Related to Education and Counseling for Certain Philadelphia Youth and Their Families Who Are Considering Licensing Publicity Rights, All Under Certain Terms and Conditions, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation."
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading this day of Bill Number 240007.
It has been moved and property seconded that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 240007. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on the second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendar. Numbers 240103, 240107, 240108, 240109, 240111, and 240112.
Thank you. Before considering these resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters of the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for the, for today's session, please do so by giving your name to Ms. Wendy Prescott at the table outside the rails to my left. To Ms. Hat-Side, who's over there. Once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on the signup sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public commenters will have three minutes to speak. However, this time will vary from time to time and session to session. Today's time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are 30 seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not done so already. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same matter. I would now ask the clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
Amanda Ayala, in support of a resolution Gautier introduced and adopted today. Amanda Ayala?
Uh, Council President, she's signifying. She's up there. Give her time to come down and come back.
Ms. Ayala, if you'd like to make your way down. In the meantime, Zach Pisick, in support of a Landau resolution, introduced and adopted today?
Are you here, Zach?
Zach Pisick. Good morning, Council President Kenyatta Johnson and fellow council members. My name is Zach Pisick, and I'm the Senior Director of Public Affairs at the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association, representing 400 operators in Philadelphia and more than 5,000 members statewide. Firstly, thank you to this council for its prior efforts in formalizing the city's permanent outdoor dining program. Uh, I also commend Councilmember Rue Landau for introducing this resolution today, authorizing city council to conduct hearings on the city's outdoor dining program. While streeteries have become an integral part to this city, both for residents and visitors, it's important to recognize that the streetery program is relatively new to Philadelphia. Given the program's novelties and the recent changes to the administration's and city council, we believe it's critical for Philadelphia to evaluate the current program comprehensively, assessing what is and isn't effective. PRLA supports Councilmember Landau's resolution, marking the initiation of this critical dialogue. The collaboration between this body, the former administration, and stakeholders across various industries ensured the permanence of outdoor seating in Philadelphia, and for that, we express our gratitude. As with any new initiative, enhancements can be made. The increased opportunities for outdoor dining showcase the creativity of our businesses, providing a unique dining experience for residents and visitors. I should also note that there is urgency to this conversation, not only due to spring and summer being on the horizon, but especially given all the visitors we intend to host as a region in 2026. Last week, the administration released a new Streetery License Guide, offering updated guidance to owners and operators facilitating outdoor dining. We commend this step and hope it signals a commitment to providing certainty, predictability, and guidance to the hospitality industry. Philadelphia's thriving restaurant scene, predominantly locally owned and reflecting diverse backgrounds, contributes significantly to the city's appeal for visitors and residents. The hospitality industry not only creates jobs, but fosters a sense of community in our neighborhoods. The, the streetery program has opened new opportunities for operators and diners alike benefiting restaurants and their surroundings. Once again, thank you, Councilmember Landau and this body for initiating this very important conversation. We look forward to working with you and collaborating in any way we can. PRLA stands ready to assist in any way possible as we collectively move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a clerk please call the next person for public comment?
Erica Brown, commenting on 240109 Violence Incident Clearance Act. Erica Brown? They're coming.
Did Amanda make her way down yet?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Uh, my name's Erica Brown from West Philly. Uh, thank you for having me. What I have here is a poster board full of, uh, postcards that young kids have drawn of what they want to see at their rec centers and libraries. Uh, it's very beautiful. I'm happy to send you a picture later. Um, but what I'm here to talk about is public safety. Um, and my dad was shot, lives in West Philly. During Hurricane Ida, my grandma's basement was destroyed. My dad had to go there three times a week to bring her groceries. Um, and the real solutions to public safety is making sure that everyone has their basic needs, right? So that's why I'm here and I've talked to many of you. Really appreciate, uh, giving, giving the time to go over our Green Spaces Active Places campaign, which is one, fully funding and staffing rec centers and libraries to keep them open and have programming. Number two, repairing every rec center and library so they're safe, accessible, and one-on-one-hundred percent renewable energy. Number three, creating public community gardens to grow fresh food. And number four, creating family-sustaining union jobs and training programs to accomplish all of the above. And if we do this, we'll have a much safer city, a much more vibrant city. Um, and so I appreciate, again, having met with many of you. And I would please recommend that you put us in contact with the mayor because despite our efforts, we have not been able to contact her yet. And I know that this is something that she would want to support. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Will a, will a clerk please call the next person for public comment?
Joy Parham Thomas, speaking on 240107 Private City Sector Diversity. Joy Parham Thomas?
Um, good morning, everybody. Thank you for your time and your recognition. I'd just like to say that this is an honor to stay here today and be recognized for the work that I've done in the city with food justice and education through culinary arts. And I hope to connect with some people in this room today and move forward to create safer spaces for the community wrapped around education and access. For anyone who knows anyone in the 19143, we're offering free meals and free brunches to everyone in need. The goal is to feed the Kink Sessin area for free. You can join us there every Tuesday from 3 to 5 p.m., I believe. We have our smart grocery store. Everything is free, down to the bags. Um, you do not need to provide any form of identification. Just come as you are. So I hope to see you guys there. Feel, feel free to share the word. Thank you.
Amanda Ayala?
You so much for ha- greetings. My name is Amanda Ayala. Thank you so much for having me today. I'm here in honor of Brother Rahim Abdul Muhammad and also known as the Mayor of Lancaster Avenue, uh, for those of you who know him well. And I'm just absolutely excited for him. Um, he's such a huge inspiration. I met Mr. Muhammad about a couple of years ago. And, um, he said, "Why don't you come on down and help me with my, with my summer camp program?" Uh, it actually was a winter camp program. And I said, "Absolutely." I'm a homeschool mother of two and also the member of the Black Farmers Co-op and a farmer myself. And I came down and assisted, uh, assisted him with the program, and we've been tied at the hip ever since. And, um, we've just, we've had a beautiful relationship working with each other, and he's an absolute joy to work with and a true inspiration to the community. Uh, he works tirelessly, uh, to make sure that every child in West Philadelphia has something fun to do anytime they're outside of school. Uh, he gives me carte blanche, uh, to, to run the programs, uh, the way that I see fit, uh, with all the different activities. And he's just, he's- uh, with all the different activities. And he's just, he's one of the most excited men I've ever met about this new Freedom District and his redevelopment plan, and I'm just honored to know him. Thank you very much.
Just give me one second. The chair recognizes Council Member Catherine Gilmar Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I respectfully request, uh, an early leave, and I would like to be recorded as voting aye on all resolutions that are listed on the final passage calendar, particularly the resolution for our dear departed colleague, Mr. Michael A. Decker. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues.
You're welcome. Leave is granted. Will the clerk please call the next person for public comment?
Jeff Hornstein, speaking on 240107, Private City Sector Diversity.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Jeff Hornstein, uh, the Executive Director of the Economy League of Greater Philadelphia. Good morning, Mr. President, esteemed members of City Council. The Economy League is our city's and region's independent think-and-do tank founded in 1909 by forward-thinking business leaders united by the belief that business has a civic responsibility beyond profit-making. And our mission is to foster inclusive and equitable growth and prosperity in greater Philadelphia. That's why I'm thrilled to be here this morning testifying in support of Resolution 240107. People who know me, I hardly ever testify in support of anything. Uh, we really just try to stick to the facts, but this committee is so important to create Council Special Committee on City and Private Sector Diversity Equity and Inclusion. As many of you know, the Economy League has been the backbone for a collaborative effort between our eds and meds anchor institutions to boost the share of their billions of dollars in annual spending that goes to diverse and local firms, an initiative that we call Philadelphia Anchors for Growth and Equity, or PAGE. In the past five years, we've helped dozens of local firms capture tens of millions of dollars of contracts with institutions like Penn, Drexel, Chop, Jefferson, Temple, among others. We've helped firms achieve, achieve growth by leveraging institutional supply chains. We've gotten significant funding from Bank of America, Lenfest, TD Charitable Foundation, Barra, JP Morgan. We've launched a portfolio of PAGE-certified companies. We are calling the PAGE 100, diverse local firms that are pre-qualified to do work with major institutions. As it happens, tonight, we'll be celebrating the fifth anniversary of our work at our annual PAGE Summit to be held on this, the last day of Black History Month. I like to call this Black Leap, Leap History Day. Uh, at the Underground Railroad Museum, Mayor Parker, Commerce Director Martinez, will be featured speakers as we discuss breaking down barriers to access for local and diverse firms, access to capital, regional, national best practices, and the need for robust data sharing among the partners. We'll be releasing our annual impact report this evening, laying out the significant progress that has been made, but to paraphrase my mentor and our PAGE co-chair, Harold T. Epps, "We need to be doing, doing more and doing it faster." Frankly, while we have a great set of partners in our anchor institutions, and many of them are innovators in creating opportunities for local and diverse firms, there's a lot of room for improvement. Our impact report analyzed nearly nine billion dollars in institutional spend and found less than five percent of it going towards local and diverse firms. So we need this committee. We're in support of it. I look forward to working with this council to increase, and talk is cheap. It's time to act.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the next person for public comment?
Regina Hairston, speaking on 240107, Private City Sector Diversity. Regina Hairston?
Coming up. Regina A. Hairston, President and CEO of the African American Chamber of Commerce for Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware. Good morning, President Council and esteemed members of City Council. I stand here before you today on behalf of the members of the African American Chamber of Commerce in support of Resolution 240107, authorizing the creation of a special committee on city and private sector diversity. AACC serves the voice of over 200,000 black-owned businesses in the Delaware Valley and southeastern region, with around eighty percent of our membership being located right here in Philadelphia. Yet, more than half report having less than 35% of its contracts and business in Philadelphia. Too often, we've heard from our members about the difficulty of navigating the procurement processes, whether it's deciding to become a minority-owned certified enterprise or connecting to non-minority firms in the hopes of partnering as a JV or subcontractor on contracts that have been long-held by non-minority firms. While we know this city council has taken steps towards dismantling these barriers, they still persist. Too often, we hear the other stories of not being able to connect to affordable capital and favorable terms in order to scale and take on new opportunities. And for those, we have the capital, that do have the capital, they do not have the talent, which is not always readily available. Too often, we hear the stories of black women-owned firms, yet being the fastest-woman population of entrepreneurs, they are making average annual revenues of $30,000. For instance, the AACC conducted a year-long study with black women, early education providers, and found that not only disparities in revenue persists, persists, but also policies that govern the ECE do not reflect the unique challenges black and brown ECE providers face. We are in support of this because while we are witnessing DEI efforts being dismantled across the nation, this council has the opportunity to double down on ensuring all of its residents and businesses have access to opportunities and basic services that are the hallmark of our great city and nation. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Deborah Irons, commenting on 240109, in support of the Victim Act Resolution.
She's coming.
Can the following individuals please make their way to the podium? If that's okay. Michael White, Angelo Perryman, and Donna Ali.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Deborah Irons. I am here to represent, um, being a part of the solution, not the problem. And, uh, I work at Parkside Evans seasonally. This will be my eighth year coming back, and in those eight seasons, I've noticed that things have been disappearing, as in art camp, organized basketball that I used to officiate there, and, uh, just popsicle sticks. We need some organized programs at Parkside. I feel that we've been neglected, and, uh, my heart is in it, and I would just like to, once again, be a part of the solution, and we need, um, some help there. So I'm just here to state that case. This is my first time being here, and I, um, I like it. Thank you.
Michael White, good morning. Uh, the one thing I know about everybody in this intimidating room is that we love Philadelphia. Uh, looking on the news and seeing you guys in chambers, it, it just looks easy, but I see that this is a difficult job you guys do. Um, I'm here today because of the young man that had the poster board, Erica. He walked in my rec center and asked, "What do you guys need? How can I help?" And I just want to urge everyone in the room to walk in your local rec center and do the same thing Erica did. Say, "What, what, what do we need here? How can I help?" Um, this is terrifying for me. I, I don't want to be here. I came up with every excuse to not come, but, um, you know, I don't think I would have had a good day had I not spoke. Um, we need funding in our rec centers. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the next speaker's public comment?
Angelo Perryman, speaking on 240107, Private City Sector Diversity. Angelo Perryman?
Council President Johnson, distinguished members of council. Uh, good morning. My name is Angelo Perryman. I'm the President of Perryman Building and Construction Services. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to participate in this council session to offer comments on the creation of a special committee on diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI. We've heard so much about what DEI shouldn't be, but I want to share for a moment what it is. Uh, in as simple as action, DEI acknowledges the beneficial results delivered in black, brown, and women-owned business communities when the odds for normal success are smaller. Again and again, these firms go out with resiliency, uh, to really challenge the system, to continue to show that they've earned the right to be a part of this commerce and to be a part of what this council believes and supports. You guys are the front line. There is nobody else that defends businesses like ours the way you're going to defend us. The return on investment to the city and the Commonwealth merits support of DEI. While our firm has created over a thousand construction jobs and completed over a thousand projects within this greater Philadelphia market, I can't see all the faces that we've touched, but I can see the chances that we've created for a better Philadelphia. We hired the first African-American carpentry foreman in the city of Philadelphia. There was a long legacy before I got here, but we were the one that did it. I can only tell you how many, I can't tell you how many council, um, council, council people, I can't tell you how many people that we have hired that are on the apprentice lines, but being a, being a part of that community allows us the chance to shape their lives, show them a better way, give them a chance to be a different person in their own community, to show that they can be a valued part of it. Uh, I, with this distinguished body, I, I asked... Okay. In, in short, uh, when I'm talking to my team, I usually ask them one question every day before we start out. Is it a 411 issue, or is it a 911 issue? They usually tell me, and I know pretty clear how critical it is. This issue regarding DEI is a 911 issue that requires firsthand attention, and that firsthand attention requires everybody to look in the mirror, and when they look in the mirror, they say, "I did my part." And doing, when I do my part as the businessperson, if you're at the front line, I need that help to say that we have the opportunities and the access that we need to continue to grow our businesses. Three quick, quick points that I want to make in two areas, in two areas that are critical to me. Education, we are, we need to create the best next 21st-century educated students that can take the new jobs that are now coming out. We need to create some grant funding, which showed itself very important through the pandemic, to allow us the chance to bridge what we're planning to correct. On economic opportunity, we want to encourage the financial institutions to better devise access to growth capital, specifically intended to address the issues that keep businesses from getting access. I'll leave comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will the clerk please call the next person for public comment?
Donna Ali for 240107, Private Sector Diversity. And can Lorena Marshall Blake, Tom Webster, and Evelyn Sample Oates also make their way to the podium? Thank you. Donna Ali.
Okay. Good morning, um, uh, Council President and, um, council members. Okay. Is that good? Okay. I'm Donna Ali, and I am President of Team Clean, um, which is a building maintenance firm here in Philadelphia. I am supporting the passage of Resolution 240107, sponsored by Council President Kenyatta Johnson, that would create City Council's Special Committee on City and Private Sector Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I will begin with the definition of DEI, just a one-sentence. Diversity, this involves actively seeking out and engaging with suppliers from various backgrounds, including but not limited to race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, disability, and socio-economic status. Equity, equity in procurement means providing fair and impartial opportunities for all supporters, regardless of their background or size. Inclusion, inclusion means creating an environment where all suppliers are felt valued, respected, and supported. My company, Team Clean, began over forty years ago. I was cleaning houses with my mom, uh, around the main line with my mom and several women from West Africa. The company has grown since then to providing employment, like Angelo, for thousands of men and women in the city, and I will say good union jobs. I could not have, I, I thank you. I could not have grown my business without the help of Councilman Jones, who was then Director of MBEK. Thank you, Councilman. I always tell people, council members, if I, if it had not been for OEO and these type programs, I would still be a domestic housekeeper on the main line, and I want to thank you all for that. And today, we face an attack on affirmative action, which undoubtedly will spill over to procurement opportunities. We need these policies. The next generation of businesses need these policies. Like Angelo said, we need you more than ever. Upcoming opportunities like technology, life sciences, and even the 2.5 billion new sports complex right here in South Philadelphia. These opportunities are too numerous to ignore. I can count on my hands and toes, the, okay, the number of black and brown businesses that are over 20 million, and there are not many. I don't have all the answers, but what I'll say to you is, please, I beg of you, we need your support. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Clerk, will the clerk please call the next individuals for public comment?
Lorena Marshall Blake for NAMAD Resolution, introduced today. Can also Tom Webster, Evelyn Sample Oates, and Vernaca Michael make their way to the podium? Lorena Marshall Blake.
Thank you. Good morning, President Johnson and members of City Council. I am Lorena Marshall Blake, the former president of the Omega Mega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, here representing my president, Charlene Collins, and our over 500 members. I am, I am speaking today for the chapter in support of the resolution which honors the life and legacy of renowned oncologist Dr. Edith Mitchell, a truly amazing and inspirational woman, which was introduced by Councilwoman Member Nina Ahmad. Joining me today are some of our Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority members. We have been active in service to the Philadelphia community for almost 98 years. In fact, the chapter just last weekend hosts the Pink Goes Red Healthy Heart Program for the West Philadelphia community. And speaking of service, Dr. Edith Mitchell was the epitome of excellence, integrity, and grace, a true trailblazer in cancer research, a retired Air Force Brigadier General, the first female physician to attain this rank, and she was a member of the Omega Mega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority. Dr. Mitchell was born and raised in Brownsville, Tennessee, and when she was a little girl, she was influenced by a black doctor, someone who looked just like her, who treated her grandfather when he made a house call. She was valedictorian of her high school class and at Tennessee University. She was initiated then into Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Her medical degree was from the Medical College of Virginia. Her studies continued at Mahary Medical College and Georgetown University. Dr. Mitchell was an oncologist in Jefferson Health, and most recently was the Enterprise Vice President for Cancer Disparities at the Sidney Cancer Center. She transitioned at the age of 76. But most importantly, her leadership extended not just here in Philly, but beyond that. And at her memorial service, I'm going to end, I see the red light, on Tuesday, it was heartwarming to see and hear her colleagues talk about her being a trailblazer, brilliant, and highly respected. Dr. Mitchell, I hear her voice saying, "Life has not always been easy," but she never gave up. She faced adversity with poise and resolve. She indeed was an She indeed was an amazing person and incredible friend. The world is a better place because she was here. Those of us who were honored to be a part of her life are truly blessed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Will clerk please call the next person for public comment?
Tom Webster, speaking on 240107, private sector diversity.
Good morning, Council President and your esteemed colleagues here at City Council of Philadelphia. My name is Tom Webster, and I'm here in support of City Council Resolution 240107, which authorizes creation of programmings coming out that's going to produce DNI programs for the city of Philadelphia. My perspective on this issue is unique. As a four-year, 40-year entrepreneur, I also had a responsibility in the Casey Administration of overseeing affirmative action, EEO, minority businesses, small business programs across the state of Pennsylvania. It really doesn't matter whether you're calling them that or during my era, affirmative action or civil rights initiative. What these programs do is create opportunities for people who have been, who have been limited by barriers to achieve higher education, go into business, and even own homes. With my organization, Black Squirrel, we currently founded initiative here in Philadelphia to invest in local community developers to build 60 affordable housings here across the city in Philadelphia, working with the Land Bank. In addition to that, what you have is historically limitations put in front of people. The MBDA, a federal agency, puts out several facts that first things that minority businesses are denied loans at three times the counterparts of their whites. Minority firms often, when given loans, are forced to pay higher interest for lesser amounts. And minority firms, in terms of government contracting, whether it's local, state, or federal, often find themselves limited in terms of opportunities that's presented to them. In addition to that, what you have is, when programs are driven to be significant, you are then given the opportunity to make change. One of the things that we saw when I was with the Casey Administration, that we were coming around and introducing programs, coming out of first, the Baki decision that was changing education in terms of affirmative action, in terms of enrollment, and then the Croson decision, which limited minority set-aside businesses. As a result of that, we were given a mandate to figure out how to still drive minority participation and state contracting across 30%. I am proud to say is that not only did we meet that goal, but also too, we exceeded it. And we exceeded it based on intentionality. This body has the opportunity to do something significant here in the city of Philadelphia by being intentional. And through being intentional, you can create policies, but more importantly, hold people accountable. Let me repeat that, hold people accountable for what it is that you're mandating that they can be done. In the Casey Administration, we were responsible for holding cabinet members accountable for meeting their procurement goals and contracting responsibilities, and that's how we created and funded many significant businesses here in Philadelphia today, from PRWT to EMSCO to the Lomax companies. Thank you very much, Council, for allowing me to speak this morning.
Thank you. Thank you. Will a clerk please call the next person for public comment?
We have Evelyn Sample Oates, speaking on a resolution, Councilmember Ahmad introduced and adopted today. Can Vernaca Michael, Evelyn Phillips, and Julie Platt also make their way to the podium? Evelyn Sample Oates.
Good morning, Council President and all members of City Council. My name is Evelyn Sample Oates, and I am a proud member of the Lynx Incorporated and Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. I am here today to speak on the life and legacy of my dear friend, Dr. Edith Peterson Mitchell. She made her mark in this world by giving back and committing her life to eliminating health disparities affecting individuals and communities in Philadelphia and beyond. Dr. Mitchell was an oncologist at Jefferson Health and a determined, determined to change the trajectory of medical outcomes of cancer in the black and underserved communities. She was a teacher, a healer, a health equity champion, and a pioneer in her field. She was highly decorated as a retired U.S. Air Force Brigadier General, the first woman physician in history to attain this rank. She was a beloved wife, mother, sister, grandmother, and friend to many. But to me, she was a mentor, a confidant, and my sister, not by blood, but by love. In October of 2020, I had the honor of sponsoring her membership into the Lynx Incorporated, a beloved organization that was founded in Philadelphia in 1946 by two African-American women. The Lynx is one of the nation's oldest and largest volunteer service organizations of extraordinary women who are committed to enriching, sustaining, and ensuring the culture and economic survival of African-Americans. Our core values are friendship, service, and commitment. The Lynx Incorporated has attracted many distinguished women who are individual achievers and have made a difference in their communities and the world, like our very own mayor, Mayor Sherrell Parker, City Representative Giselle Jones, retired City Councilmember Marion Tascow, and the late, great Councilwoman Augusta Clark, all members of the Lynx Incorporated. Dr. Mitchell served our organization well as the Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee. She will be greatly missed, but her legacy and her work will live on to save lives forever. I want to thank Councilmember Ahmad for sponsoring this resolution for your friend. Thank you, Dr. Nina Ahmad. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a clerk please call the next individuals for public comment?
Vernaca Michael. Also, can Evelyn Phillips, Julie Platt, and DeAngelo Keys also make their way to the podium? Vernaca Michael?
President Johnson, members of City Council, and all assembled.
Good morning.
I'm Veronica Michael. Here to speak about Dr. Edith Mitchell. Doctor extraordinary.
And Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, and a friend of the legendary Blue Horizon, the number-one boxing venue in the world. Dr. Mitchell treated both my friend and my boxing director of the legendary Blue Horizon. But she was also supporter of our annual cancer boxing show, to which we invited cancer survivors and contributed to many cancer organizations. Dr. Mitchell was also a person who received an honor award from the Blue Horizon Boxing Promotion LLC. She received it for her excellence in her field of work and her support of the education of the Blue Horizon Niakumba students, and I repeat, the students. We continue to support and salute Dr. Edith P. Mitchell for a job well done. Thank you very much, Council.
You're welcome.
Evelyn Phillips, speaking on a resolution introduced by Councilmember Phillips today.
And Councilmembers, my name, my name is Evelyn Phillips. I am a research coordinator and health educator at Penn Medicine's Aberson Cancer Center Office of Community Outreach and Engagement, where I address disparities in colorectal cancer screening among vulnerable populations and underserved communities. We are deeply grateful for the opportunity to help to clear March as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month in Philadelphia. I'd like to thank Councilmember Anthony Phillips for his help to make this happen, also sponsoring the bill, Jamie Gardier, and Councilman Ahmad. I would like to share a few facts about colorectal cancer. Colorectal cancer is a cancer or growth of the large intestine. It is the third most common and lethal cancer in the United States, and 2024, approximately 150,000 individuals will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer, and about 50,000 of those will die of this disease. Individuals over the age of 45 are at risk, even if they do not have symptoms. Fortunately, colorectal cancer screening is entirely preventable. There are many tests available to, to prevent and find colorectal cancer early, from simple at-home tests to colonoscopy. Penn Medicine is here to help you and your loved ones prevent colorectal cancer. We are working with insurance companies, foundations, and other research grant agencies on our beloved, and our beloved sports teams. Councilmembers, it would be a great privilege to collaborate with you. I hope that you consider allowing us to attend future events and work together toward creating, creating healthier, happier, and more informed communities, one screening at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the next person for public comment?
Julie Platt, speaking on a resolution introduced by Councilmember Thomas today. Also, DeAngelo Keys, Lynn Landis, and Melba Terrell, please make your way to the podium.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julie Platt. Some of you guys might know me because I work for Bellevue Strategies, but I'm also a runner, a part of the Philadelphia Runner Track Club, and I just wanted to thank Councilmember Thomas for honoring my teammate and friend and teacher, Elaine S. She qualified for the Olympic Trials in five, sorry, she ran up, qualified for the Olympic Trials, running 5 minutes 57 seconds per mile for 26.2 miles, which is really, really fast. And she was only, 163 other women in the country made the Olympic Trials. She ran the Olympic Trials in Orlando, did really well, ran a 245, which is about 620 per mile, which is also extremely fast. And the best thing about her, though, is that she's also a public school teacher at Furnace High School in South Philly, and she teaches Spanish, and she's been inspiring her students to really understand that anybody can achieve something and that, you know, you don't have to be a professional runner or, you know, be sponsored by a big company to be able to really follow your dreams and make a difference. So I just wanted to honor her as a fellow teammate and thank Councilmember Thomas.
Clerk, please call the next person for public comment?
DeAngelo Keys, speaking on a resolution introduced and adopted by Squilla today. Can Lynn Landis, Melba Terrell, and Dr. Atrei Basumalik please also make your way to the podium? DeAngelo Keys?
Good morning. My name is Lynn Landis of SafeStreetsPhilly.org. We do not support the resolution calling on the U.S. Congress to pass the Victim Act. It is ironic for City Council to want federal support to stop crime in the city when, at the same time, city officials have gone out of their way to invite crime by declaring Philadelphia a sanctuary city. What kind of message are city officials sending when they encourage the violation of federal immigration laws? And do the citizens of Philadelphia even support such an unlawful, illegal policy? Was our sanctuary city designation the result of the informed consent of the governed? Was there a referendum on, that the vote, the public could vote on? No. Our sanctuary city status was a result of an executive order from the former mayor's offices. It is an open invitation to drug dealers as well as sex and human traffickers. Tens of millions of illegal immigrants were already living in the United States, but an estimated 7 to 10 million additional illegal aliens, mainly military-age young men, have poured across the borders in just the past three years. Do you know how many active military personnel we have? Only 1.3. Make no mistake, this is an invasion. We are now literally a narco state with government officials assisting the drug cartels in their takeover of immigration into the United States, as well as controlling the illegal drug trade across the country. Our federal government, as well as government officials in Philadelphia and other sanctuary cities and states, are responsible for this invasion, which is a large part of our crime problem. And all the money in the world won't fix it, but enforcing the law will. It's the obvious solution that City Council needs to finally embrace. Thank you.
Clerk, please call the next speaker, public comment?
Melba Terrell, speaking on 240103, Land Bank for District 3.
Happy Thursday. Kenyatta Johnson, congratulations, being the president.
Thank you.
I was here 10 years ago. I am a 24-year colorectal cancer warrior. Mr. Jones, I came to your office, Mr. Jones, I spoke to you. I am being sued over, I am being sued over a tangled title. I am being sued over a tangled title that your office, I thought I was getting the city home. Nine years later, I've been paying the city. I cannot even get a mortgage. I am about to be homeless in the next 60 days. I am a 24-year colorectal cancer warrior. All I'm asking you, Mr. Jones, is please rectify this, because there is no place for me to go. There is no housing for nobody. I'm asking you, Mr. Jones, if you can rectify this. Either I'm gonna have to sue the city to get all of my money back. So I'm asking you again, can you please help me rectify this? I have everything I need, the city made agreement with me, for 12 years.
Excuse me, ma'am.
To pay off back taxes.
Excuse me, ma'am. I just want to make sure that your comments are germane to the actual Bill Number 240103, which refers to Land Bank Land Distribution in the third councilmatic district.
President Johnson, I understand that, President Johnson, but this was the only way for me to come in here to express myself. This was the only way for me to do this. I done called down here. I done been to the missile building. So this is the only way for me to express how I feel. So I apologize to you if it's not the resolution for today.
Chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. The young man standing right there, Mr. Glass, will take you, and we can start that process right now.
I have everything that I have right here, Mr. Jones.
Okay.
Will a clerk please call the next speaker?
Dr. Atrei Basumalik or Basumalik, speaking on the resolution, Councilmember Ahmad introduced and adopted today.
Good morning, Council President Johnson. Good morning to esteemed councilmembers. Thank you to...
Excuse me, can everybody like tone it down just for a second so we can hear the individuals providing public comment, please? Please restart your remarks.
Good morning, Council President Johnson. Good morning to esteemed members of the council. Thank you, Councilmember Dr. Ahmed, for bringing up this resolution, and thank you to Councilmembers Quilla for attending the memorial service and speaking at Dr. Edith Mitchell's memorial service at Jefferson. I am Dr. Atrei Basumalik, an oncologist by profession and one of her many mentees. I'm here with my colleague Hugh Lavery to pay tribute to the extraordinary life and legacy of Dr. Edith P. Mitchell. Born in the late 1940s to a farmer and homemaker in Brownsville, Tennessee, she was inspired to become a physician after witnessing firsthand the lack of access to adequate healthcare for people of color at that time. This inspiration also guided her career, not only as a healthcare pioneer, but also as a barrier breaker and civil rights champion. Perhaps there is no greater testament to Dr. Mitchell's legacy of service than her ability to prioritize individuals in medically underserved communities. Dating back to a time as state air surgeon of Missouri, while volunteering at a clinic, she was known to make six-hour drives to examine immigrant farming families in a remote area with a high rate of sickle cell disease. Throughout her illustrious career, Dr. Mitchell had multitude of leadership roles at Jefferson. As the Enterprise Vice President for Cancer Disparities and Director of the Center to Eliminate Cancer Disparities, she tirelessly championed the cause of health equity. Dr. Mitchell was a barrier breaker. She earned her flight wings at the age of 40 with two teenage daughters, and also became certified in aerospace medicine. And in the process, she created history by becoming the first woman physician who was a brigadier general in the Air Force. Over her 36 years of military service, she earned over 15 prestigious military service medals and ribbons, including the Legion of Merit and Air Force Achievement and Commendation Medals. Dr. Mitchell's extensive list of professional civic and community awards is too lengthy to cover in this brief. to cover in this brief talk. Her influence transcended her medical practice, which sought after insights from prestigious organizations like National Cancer Advisory Board and NIH Council of Councils. As the 116th president of the National Medical Association and a dedicated member of numerous professional committees, she tirelessly championed diversity and inclusion in health care. Due to her profound experience in cancer research, Dr. Mitchell was appointed to the NCI's Blue Ribbon Panel advising on then-Vice President, Vice President Biden's National Cancer Moonshot Initiative. As we bid farewell to a true trailblazer, let us not mourn her passing, but rather celebrate the extraordinary life of Dr. Edith P. Mitchell. Her legacy will continue to inspire us all to strive a world where equity, justice, and compassion reign supreme. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the next individuals for public comment?
Is Hugh Lavery speaking? Hugh Lavery?
Malik. No, it's okay. I just... Council President, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to honor the legacy of my friend and colleague, Dr. Edith Mitchell. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can we also have Rich Guerilla, Jeremy Bladstein, and Ogbonna Haggins make their way to the podium as well? Malik Muhammad.
Good morning, President Johnson, council members, and my fellow Philadelphia siblings and guests. My name is Malik Muhammad, and I am the Director of Inclusion Initiatives and Social Justice Education at the University of Pennsylvania. On this, the last day of Black History Month, I am beyond honored to be here today to speak in full support of the passing of the resolution recognizing my father, Abdul Rahim Muhammad, as a Black history maker. Since the day I was born and well before, this humble man has been committed to a life of service. For over 50 years, he has served the City of Philadelphia community with the highest form of dedication and persistence that is truly inspiring. I remember when I was young, he consistently instilled in me that patience is a virtue. Today is a testament to that. His patience and perseverance in uplifting the African-American Muslim community of Philadelphia are a reflection of a long line of social change makers that have undoubtedly shaped the experience of past, present, and future generations. As a young man myself who lives here in the city, I have seen firsthand how my father gives of himself tirelessly as an activist, educator, and public servant. His energy, spirit, and drive for freedom, justice, and equality for all is awe-inspiring and needed today more than ever. As I yield my time, I invite you to embrace my father's light as you continue to shine your own on this city, this country, and our world. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the next speaker.
Speaking on 240107, City Private Sector Diversity.
Now, that was super, wasn't it?
One second. Let me back up for a second. Mr. Muhammad, go ahead, sir. We yield the floor to you, sir.
My name is Abdul Rahim Muhammad, and I'm the Director of the New Africa Center Muslim American Museum and Archive over at 4243 Lancaster Avenue. And I would love to thank this distinguished body for honoring me as a Black history maker and to the Councilmember Jamie for even recognizing the work that we do. I stand here today, I really feel in my whole mind, heart, and soul that I'm no more than a continuation of the spirit of my ancestors. My father was the founder of the Lancaster Avenue Business Association, and I stand on his shoulders. He was known as the mayor of Lancaster Avenue. And so I'm carrying that title today. I'm the new mayor of Lancaster Avenue. My dad had a dream of transforming Lancaster Avenue and make it a vibrant quarter. And God has blessed me to be able to partner with distinguished people like Mosaic Development Partners and my capacity to connect with people, not because I have any money, but because of my social capital and because of my sincerity and because I'm a mission-driven person, like my son just said. God has given me the quality of patience, and with patience and consistency, God says he guarantees you success. And so I'm a living witness that you can be successful. So thank you so much for this distinguished honor. I invite you all to come to our new Freedom District Neighborhood Plan meeting that we're hosting Saturday, March the 9th, at the Claire Muhammad School. And I invite you all to come and give your input and your ideas on how we can use arts and culture, history, and neighborhood identity to transform our community. So welcome to the new Freedom District.
No, that's right.
We have Rich Guerilla, speaking on 240107, the City Private Sector Diversity. Can Jeremy Bladstein, Ogbonna Haggins, and Stephanie Marsh also make their way to the podium?
Well, that's a little tough to follow. Good morning, Council President Johnson and council members. My name is Rich Guerilla, and happy leap day, everyone. Today, you will consider a bill on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Five years ago, the Parks Department and Fairmount Park Conservancy...
Excuse me, just one second, Mr. Grisella. Mr. Guerilla, just one second. The chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, I had the honor of knowing Mr. Muhammad's father. And if you ain't a... apple fell from the tree, I don't know about trees. And to see your son following in your footsteps in his own way is truly, truly heartwarming. And to see that patience does pay off. So assalamualaikum.
Alasalam.
Today, you will consider a bill on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Five years ago, the Parks Department and Fairmount Park Conservancy developed a plan to renovate FDR Park. A major part of that plan would replace meadows, woodlands, and protected heritage trees with a large suburban-style sports complex featuring 16 artificial turf playing fields at a cost of $100 million, supposedly in the name of equity for the kids. Now, thanks to this past Sunday's Philadelphia Inquirer, all of you know the true cost of this toxic turf. Young athletes fall victim not only to injuries but to brain cancer, leukemia, and more because of the forever chemicals in artificial turf.
Mr. Rich, can we speak on what's germane to the...
That's right.
...bill at hand, which is focusing on creating a special committee on diversity, equity, and inclusion in the public and private sector as it relates to addressing equity and making sure Black and Brown and women and other individuals have an opportunity to have a seat at the table when it comes to developing businesses here in the City of Philadelphia. Go ahead.
Well, I will certainly... I certainly do think it's relevant. Thanks to the Inquirer, you all know that the claims that there is artificial turf that doesn't contain these forever chemicals is simply... they're simply untrue. The testing is misleading. The vendors lie. The conservancy lies. There is no such thing as safe artificial turf. Yet in that five years, this council has never voted on this plan to replace a large park.
Rich, I'm being...
And that's why we never get to address this in this council.
Thank you, sir.
This is about equity for the city. This is about equity for the city.
Will the clerk please call the next person to speak?
Jeremy Bladstein, speaking on 240103, a land bank resolution in District 3. Can Ogbonna Haggins and Stephanie Marsh also make their way to the podium?
I'd just like to say how moving that was, just to hear Mr. Muhammad speak just now. That was really powerful. I, for the last year, have spent time with Queen Mother Falak Fatah at the House of Imoja, and those types of people are the backbone of the communities that we have in Philadelphia, and their organizations need to be supported. So I just, first off, wanted to say that. But good morning, Kenyatta President Johnson, Councilmember Jamie Gutierrez, and City Council. My name is Jeremy Bladstein, and I am the Director of Finance and Design for Warren's Brothers Real Estate. Some of you in this room may know me from my Twitter account, NextPHLMayor, but that's not why I'm here today. Today, I'm here in support of bill number 240103, which will transfer land from the land bank to allow us to build 11 homes for ownership in West Philadelphia, sold at prices between $200,000 and $280,000. How? The Turn the Key Program. The Turn the Key Program allows us to build these homes and sell them at those prices. It creates generational wealth for families via homeownership. This is only a small step in tackling the affordable housing problem facing Philadelphia, but as Mayor Parker has said for her first term, "I'm committed to building 30,000 units of affordable housing and putting Turn the Key on steroids." Let's make it happen. Streamline the land bank process, support organizations like Black Squirrel, and of course, end councilmatic prerogative. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the next person for public comment, please?
Ogbonna Haggins, speaking on 240109, the Violent Incident Clearance Act.
Good morning, Ogbonna.
Before I start, I would really like to send council and the City of Philadelphia my condolences for the passing of Michael Decker. And the new clerk mispronouncing my name just reminds me of the first time that Mr. Decker mispronounced my name, and I had to go into office and tell him that it's Obona and that the G is silent.
Obona? Obona Haggins, my apologies.
Yeah, so I really send everybody my condolences because it's a great loss. So I understand the reason to investigate violent crimes. I'm speaking on the... was it Violence... the Victim Bill. So I understand the importance of dealing with crime. I understand the importance of decreasing the closure rate in murders, right? But I don't want council to forget that the objective of getting rid of the ghost guns, it was not to make them legal, which it actually does, because it provides people who have federal licenses the ability to manufacture those guns. And as I spoke two weeks ago, it actually is structurally racist because the only people who can really get a federal license to produce ghost guns are white folk who have money. And the individuals who actually, for negative reasons, but popularize ghost guns are going to be locked out of the ghost gun industry the same way that Afro-Americans are locked out of the marijuana industry that Afro-Americans pretty much promoted and made happen. So I just want to implore council to review the bill that I introduced as an unseated council member on structural racism, because almost everything that I heard people talk about today is a result of structural racism. When I was a teacher, architecture program, we had a contest. We had to compete against the suburban schools. And the suburban schools had computers and the top-of-the-line equipment, and my students had broken drafting boards. So guess what we were told? You have to overcome. You have to overcome. Why? Because the Dobbin School should have been equal to the schools in the suburbs. Structural racism is the greatest problem that's affecting not only Philadelphia but this country. And by Philadelphia being the city of first, it would be absolutely incredible for the members who have not read this bill to read it and to adopt this bill because it solves a lot of problems, particularly gun violence, which is... the study roadmap to safer communities says that at its root, gun violence is a result of structural racism. So I decided to produce this bill, since none of you guys did it. Maybe you're so busy, I know. But what I'm saying to you is to read this bill, adopt this bill, someone please introduce this bill, and get it to the first Afro-American woman's mayor, Mayor Des, to sign this historic legislation. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the next person for public comment?
We have Stephanie Marsh, speaking on a resolution Councilmember Ahmad is adopting today.
Good morning, President Johnson and council members. Hello to Liz McCollum, Girls High Girl. I am Stephanie Marsh, and I'm not speaking for the administration or for AKA, but am saluting a remarkable woman, Dr. Edith Mitchell. It's still Black History Month, and we are on the cusp of Women's History Month, thanks to Councilmember Ahmad and her staffers, AKA Kyra and Dewayne. Dr. Edith Mitchell, rare like a leap day, was born on a Tennessee farm and was later high school valedictorian in Brownsville, Tennessee. She had credentials. She was a biochemistry major at Tennessee State University, an HBCU in Nashville. Think Oprah Wilma Rudolph, Sixers Robert Covington are graduates. Dr. Mitchell was initiated into AKA in 1966. She graduated from the Medical College of Virginia, and she furthered her studies at Maharry, another Nashville HBCU. She was phenomenal, brilliant, a rock star. And she was a world-renowned Jefferson Health Oncologist for almost 30 years. Her expertise was in cancer research, and she concentrated on colorectal, prostate, and breast cancer, and specifically triple-negative breast cancer, which disproportionately impacts women of color, like Gloria Casares, who has a state marker posted outside of City Hall. Dr. Mitchell made breast cancer awareness an international focus of AKA. How? The past international president of AKA, Glenda Glover, is the current president of Tennessee State University. Dr. Mitchell hosted our AKA Omega Omega Chaplain Members at Jefferson Hospital for a few times. She educated us so that we could educate others. My mom, who is here, liked those events. In February for Black History Month, she would host a symposium at Jefferson Health for Black physicians, and she invited all her other groups for the history lessons and to honor medical scholarship recipients. She was a mentor to scores of medical professionals throughout her career. A focus for her was to increase the number of underrepresented individuals in medicine. When she became the president of the National Medical Association, those are the Black doctors, this was in 2015, she wanted then-Michael... Mayor Michael Nutter to appear at an NMA board meeting. He attended, and then the following year, the National Convention of the NMA was held in Philadelphia. That was Dr. Mitchell, always teaching, connecting, seeing the big picture. Interesting, her memorial service the other day was held in the Michael Nutter Auditorium. Interesting, her memorial service the other day was held in the Michael Nutter Auditorium. Also, as the NMA president, Dr. Mitchell and famed attorney Benjamin Crump, who was the MBA president, those are the black lawyers, hosted an event at Jefferson for black doctors and lawyers during the DNC held in Philadelphia. The talent in that room was awe-inspiring. In 2020, she was recognized as a Fellow of the Royal College of Physicians of London. The RCP was founded in 1518 by King Henry VIII, a mark of achievement and skill as a doctor. She's a black woman being recognized in London for this achievement. Dr. Mitchell's life's journey was to eliminate cancer disparities for all populations, regardless of background or zip code, and to increase the diversity of patients enrolled in clinical trials. She had extraordinary credentials and accolades, but was very humble, but also very demanding. I learned very quickly, when Dr. Mitchell called, you responded and made whatever she wanted happen. She was always the brigadier general. Like the three AKs and hidden figures, Dr. Mitchell was a hidden figure, who should be saluted for her contributions to Philadelphia and beyond. And I would just want to point out, her sister Phyllis and daughter Dale are here today. I know Dale is here from Missouri. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on public comment for today?
Council President, there are no other speakers on today's calendar.
That concludes today's public comment, period. We would now consider resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars. Would a clerk please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution 240103, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 18-20, 24-30, and 34-36 South 44th Street, and 4422 and 4426-30 Ludlow Street, located in the 3rd Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Jamie Gaudier for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution 240107, a resolution authorizing the creation of a special committee on city and private sector diversity, equity, and inclusion policies to examine the impact of such policies and to provide practical evidence-based recommendations to enhance policy effectiveness in the promotion of minority, women, and disabled-owned businesses in the city of Philadelphia.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion on the resolution on my behalf.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution Number 240108, Councilmember Thomas for Council President Johnson, a resolution authorizing the reconvening of the Philadelphia Tax Reform Commission and its advisory committee to conduct an updated comprehensive analysis of all taxes imposed in the city of Philadelphia and to make recommendations concerning tax reforms that support the city's economic growth and competitiveness.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion on the resolution on my behalf.
Council President, I just want to take a second to really thank you for your leadership on this particular issue. This is one of the biggest problems we have in our city right now that's not being discussed. So I enthusiastically move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title for the next resolution?
Resolution Number 240109, introduced by Councilmember Jones, a resolution calling on the United States Congress to pass the Bipartisan Violent Incident Clearance and Technological Investigative Methods Victim Act, which will give law enforcement the support they need to investigate violent crime and increase the closure rate of homicide cases.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones for a motion on the resolution?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the next title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 240111, introduced by Councilmember Lozada, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2428 North Orianna Street, located in the 7th Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsu Lozada for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Resolution Number 240112, introduced by Councilmember Young, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2464 North Natrona Street, located in the 5th Councilmatic District, in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for a motion on the resolution?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for this, its adoption.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution recognizing March 2024 as Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month and promoting the public awareness of the risk of colon cancer, introduced by Councilmember Phillips.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Anthony Phillips for a motion on the resolution?
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read?
A resolution introduced for, on behalf of Council President Johnson, honoring Kenneth E. Lawrence Jr. on his appointment as Board Chair at the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority, and recognizing Mr. Lawrence for his dedication to improving transit service across the Septon Network.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember, I missed that, who was that?
Sorry, Gilmore, she asked for leave.
Okay. Would a clerk, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas?
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of you and Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, Councilmember Thomas. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution congratulating the Auden Reed High School girls' basketball team for winning the 2024 Public League Championship. It was a resolution introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion on the resolution?
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf, as well as Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, I hesitantly move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and this resolution has been greatly adopted. Would a clerk please read the next, the title of the next resolution?
A resolution honoring the Defender Association of Philadelphia on the 90th anniversary of the association's founding and recognizing the contributions of the association and its attorneys to Philadelphia's criminal justice system. Also, a resolution introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson on Council President Kenyatta Johnson's behalf.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion on the resolutions.
Thank you, Council President. On your behalf and as well as the behalf of the Majority Leader, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Negative second. It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A resolution honoring Mr. Abdulrahim Muhammad on the occasion of Black History Month for his contributions to West Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Gauthier.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jamie Gaudier.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A resolution.
Congratulations.
A resolution honoring and congratulating the educator of the month, Elaine Estes, a Spanish teacher at Furness High School who recently participated in the U.S. Olympic Trials as a marathon runner, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A resolution recognizing the life and legacy of Baba Joe Foster, a community leader in the movement for African-centered education in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I'll speak more in-depth about Baba Joe on the floor. So for now, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Dr. Joelle Mogerman for her leadership as the first female and first black chief executive officer and president of the Philadelphia Zoo, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones for a motion on the resolution?
Just want to recognize that that's mostly in the 3rd Councilmatic District, but I move for the adoption for the parking lot that I represent.
Second, parking is a big deal, though. It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A resolution recognizing and honoring Joy Parham Thomas for her impactful contributions to a thriving black food culture in Philadelphia as a chef, culinary educator, and advocate for food justice, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution?
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing Philadelphia City Council to conduct hearings and to investigate the efficiency, implementation, and enhancement of the outdoor dining program and improve opportunities for restaurants to operate streeterys and sidewalk cafes, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau for a motion on the resolution?
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A resolution honoring and recognizing the work and accomplishments of Denise Ripley, whose dedication to the city, to community service, and to the housing rights of all, have invigorated and supported civic life in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution?
Yes, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Congratulations. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Honoring and recognizing, a resolution honoring and recognizing Prudence Powell for her powerful advocacy, love for her community, and her inspiring work to keep families in Philadelphia whole and to provide sanctuary and stability to all, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution?
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution honoring and recognizing the life, work, and accomplishments of Rochelle Nichols-Solomon, whose dedication to serving, teaching, and advocating for students and marginalized peoples has improved the lives of people across the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution?
Adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Congratulations. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution honoring and recognizing the work and accomplishments of the stadium stompers, whose dedication to advocating for the North Philadelphia community and for housing rights for all people have helped secure neighborhood stability for communities in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Brooks.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks for a motion on the resolution?
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Congratulations. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A resolution proclaiming the month of March in 2024 as Irish Heritage Month in the city of Philadelphia and honoring the St. Patrick's Day Observance Association of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Driscoll.
Make sure you bring them donations, too. The clerk recognizes Councilmember Mike Driscoll for a motion on the resolution?
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
A resolution celebrating the life and honoring the memory of trailblazing physician, researcher, and humanitarian Dr. Edith Peterson Mitchell, introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma for a motion on the resolution?
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved in property, seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor will signify by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating the life and legacy of former Chief Clerk Michael Andrew Decker, our friend, colleague, and dedicated public servant, introduced by Councilmember O'Neill.
The Chair recognizes, will be a standing voice for the Chair, recognizes Councilmember O'Neill. All members, please stand.
Mr. President, I have the option of the resolution and a moment of silence.
Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
There are no more resolutions on the calendar for consideration, Mr. President.
That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? The Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you so much, Council President. Today, on the last day of Black History Month, I'm introducing resolutions in honor of several black leaders who have been making history right here in Philadelphia as part of Living History PHO. The first that I introduce was Prudence Powell. Prudence was unable to be here, and earlier you saw a picture of her, because she's currently in hospice, so her children were here with her, and they wanted to get back. Prudence is a champion for immigrant justice, and her work is an important reminder of the intersection of racial justice and immigrant justice in our city. As a leader of the shutdown Burks Coalition, she succeeded in closing down the Burks County Detention Center, which imprisoned black and brown immigrant families seeking asylum. Prudence is currently in a hospital, but her family was here to be here on her behalf. Second, I would like to honor Rochelle Nichols-Solomon, who took this kicking and screaming. I had to call her personally myself. And I had to say this because so often, as black women, we feel like we don't deserve the honor after all the hard work and setting the pathway for just women in general in our city. Rochelle is a champion for black and brown young people in Philadelphia. She has been a leader in over 10 organizations focused on educational equity, including Youth United for Change, Education Law Center, School Advocacy Council at Samuel Powell School, Philadelphia Public School Notebook, Research for Action, and Power Interface. Through her advocacy, she has known what is possible when parents, grandparents take the lead in transforming our schools. Third, I would like to honor, along with, I'm co-introducing with Councilmember Young, Denise Ripley as a seasoned leader for people in North Philadelphia, as a block captain and-- captain, a community person, and an organizer with Stadium Stompers and the Philadelphia Unemployment Project, she shows us the power of blending direct service and public advocacy to strengthen her community. And finally, I would like to honor the Stadium Stompers. The Stadium Stompers formed in 2015 as a coalition of community members, students, and faculty who came together to oppose the proposed football stadium on Temple University's campus. Through their efforts, they showed the power of community members coming together to make an impact on how land and resources are used. When we think about history, we sometimes think about the musty textbooks that we had when we were in school, or we think about politicians and generals and other famous men who dominate all the pages in the history books. It's harder to learn the stories of everyday people who held families and communities together, who nurtured movements, who shouldered their way into rooms where they weren't supposed to be, and who challenged the course of history through the daily and persistent force of their love. Those are the stories that we are honoring today, and these people are living history, and we owe them the reverence and gratitude for the ways they have shaped our communities, our city, and our future. And I just wanted to thank each and every one of these folks that I introduced or the groups that we introduced because these are the folks that helped formulate me into being a strong activist when I was boots on the ground. And I have been committed to that since I've been elected. So this Living History, PHL, was just a representation of what it means to be a Black woman, raising a family, trying to figure it out, but still standing up and fighting for your community. And so often, I went through the list of all these women. They came way before me, never receiving any recognition. And I think it's important that we celebrate our own, and we have to make sure that they realize that they are worthy of recognition, worthy of the appreciation, and worthy of the support of the city that they carry on their backs, and don't complain about it. And lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't just say something about Mike Decker. You know, I just remember just him talking about wanting to take a vacation, and that's what he was going to do. And as I honor this Living History, PHL, it reminds me that we should all take a break, step back, smell of roses, and enjoy our families while we still have time. And I think, you know, in Mike's honor, I just, you know, Living History, PHL, I just remember all the amazing stories that he would sit there and tell me over in the clerk's office, and I just want him to know that he will be remembered. And I also want to welcome our new acting chief clerk, Liz McCollum, for stepping up to the plate and helping us get back on track. This is hard for all of us. It's a hard transition for all of us here in council, so I just want to thank her for her service and being able to do that. And last but not least, a part of this Black History, PHL, a few years ago, I think we honored Mike Henson in this room. And it's really my honor to continually see things moving forward based on his life and legacy of the work that he's done around HIV prevention, LGBTQ community, and housing, all the intersections coming together. And we're still seeing his legacy play out. So I'm very warmed and kind of humbled by that. And I want to say one, my last shout out. See, I saved it all. I usually don't say anything, so be patient because all of y'all talk a lot. So one other thing is that we said that we wanted to do something in honor of Black History Month, so I want to thank all of my colleagues for being willing to come out and represent what it means to be a part of Black history, whether you're representing a fraternity or sorority, or African history and your sorority over there in the corner. I just want to thank you for us coming together, and thank you for everyone that was willing to just take a pen, because this is Black History 365 for me. However, it would be a lost opportunity if we didn't celebrate our history today collectively, realizing that Black people have made a huge contribution on our city and continue to do so. Thank you so much, Council President.
You're welcome. Good job. Any speeches on the part of the majority? The Chair recognizes Councilman Curtis Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I look at that reef and think about Mr. Decker, the eighteenth member of City Council, remember Brooks is so right. He was next door to me, and I would see him in the hallway, and, you know, I asked him, are you going to stay around another term? And he talked about whether or not he would. I'm sure you know that. And you gotta take the time, y'all, to, this is important work that we do, but no more important than you. It's important work that we do, but it is not more important than self-care and making sure that you're okay. Transitioning from my friend Mike Decker, I want to thank everybody that came out last Saturday to parent university. Members of this body, including yourself, Mr. President, showed a lot of parents that they are important, that they matter. As you look at some of the findings we've had in the Crime Summit and Blueprint for a Better Philadelphia, what we realize is what goes in the wash comes out in the rinse. If we don't address our children early, they will be problem adults later on. You wind up spending whatever the investment was as a child, three to five times as much trying to correct wrong people. And of the workshops, the resource, and I thank you and your family for taking the time to walk to each one of those hundred and seventy-five resource tables. It meant a lot to the providers. But some of the workshops were inciting, informative, but frightening. The one about words do matter, they showed a clip from the movie Precious. I don't know if you saw it, but there's a part in there where the mother is berating her daughter, and it brought tears to people's eyes to think that someone that you look to for guidance can push you so low. Another workshop that I thought was impactful was, and I got this from Member Bass, and I give you credit every time I say it, what do you do when you realize the shooter lives with you? And it was informative about what to do without over prosecuting your child, but keeping them safe even if it's from themselves. The other one that I thought was pretty impactful was grandparents with a second tour of duty. More and more grandparents are stepping up to the plate for the second time to take on the responsibility of raising kids. This was the first time inaugural effort, but we're working with DHS COAs, JEVs, and the Parker Administration to not only make this Parent 2.0, but Parent 3.0, to be able to provide this. And thank you for your generous commitment to fund this activity, Mr. President. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Absolutely. The Chair recognizes Councilman, it was a very, very informative event as well. I was raised by my nana, so I get it, the second tour of duty as well. The Chair recognizes Councilman Jim Harity.
Good evening, colleagues, and Council President. I'd like to commend my colleague, Councilwoman Gaudier, for recognizing Brother Muhammad. It is true that we wait sometimes too long before we recognize the work that they're doing. And I encourage anybody that hasn't been over to the museum that he keeps there on Lancaster Avenue. As a student of history, I was very, very impressed. That being said, I'd also like to thank the cosponsors of my pothole bill today. You know, during the campaign, there was a poll that came out of what the citizens of Philadelphia thought that we were short on. Of course, the top two we all know, which is crime and education, but number three on that poll, by far, number four wasn't even close, was potholes. And as a highway worker, I thought there was something that we should be doing about that, because the bottom line is, what's being labeled a pothole is not a pothole. It is a construction hole that was done illegally by a contractor. And the way I know it was done illegally is because if that contractor was to pull a permit, then the city of Philadelphia would come out and fill that hole, because we want to make sure it's done right. There's a certain way it has to go. And it always drives me crazy when they get labeled a pothole. And I'm sure it drives the citizens of Philadelphia crazy when they think that they hit a pothole and call us in the city, trying to get some money for the damage that was done to their car. And then they are told, once we go out and investigate, that no, that wasn't a pothole, that was a construction hole. And of course, then we have to figure out who did that construction hole. So I thank you. This is very important to the citizens of Philadelphia. This is common sense stuff that we need to be doing as a city. People need to be able to get around. People need to be able to drive on our roads without having to worry about losing their suspension or a tire to one of these massive construction holes. So I thank you all and look forward to what we're going to do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank everyone, including her sister, Phyllis Arnold, and her daughter Dale, and all who spoke so eloquently about the trailblazing physician, researcher, humanitarian, Dr. Edith Peterson Mitchell. I wanted to just speak to one aspect of her amazing career, is her work that she did that helped increase minority participation in clinical trials. And she worked tirelessly to eliminate health disparities affecting too many individuals and communities in Philadelphia and across our country. If nothing else, I want her enduring legacy to continue in making sure we end medical racism. That is a huge issue in our medical communities, and it is literally killing people. So I want to commend her for all the work she's done, and I want all of us to continue and carry out that work so that medical racism is no more. I also wanted to thank my staff members here, Kyra Harris and Duane Terry, who put this together. Since I actually never met Dr. Mitchell, and I'm sad that I didn't, and speaking to the point that giving people their flowers while they're here, and she died very suddenly. So I want to thank all of you for recognizing her, but most importantly, continue her legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Council President, council colleagues, as well as all of Philadelphia, good afternoon. Several weeks ago, Councilwoman Lazada and her colleagues, Councilmembers Harity, Driscoll, and Squilla rendered and commenced several initiatives of goodwill to end long nights of human captivity that residents of Kingsington neighborhood of Philadelphia have experienced. Unfortunately, their noble decision has gone without, has not gone without opposition. This opposition has risen to incredible proportions. While the majority of residents of Kingsington welcome the swift moves of the Kingsington Caucus, there remains a loud minority of individuals that live in places like Ardmore, Narberth, and other neighborhoods outside of Kingsington voicing harrowingly comments about their efforts. Though Kingsington does not encompass the Ninth District, I wish to offer my public and unqualified support for a dramatic, thoughtful, compassionate, and timely shift in policy for one of Philadelphia's most bedeviling and vexing challenges, and that is, what do we do about Kingsington? Most of us here on council welcome the efforts of the Kingsington Caucus. Our colleague, Councilwoman Lazada, and the other members of the Kingsington Caucus, and our new mayor, Sherrell Parker, have struck out on the early stages of a new and welcome approach to battling the challenges faced by Kingsington residents. I wanted to be reflected on the record that they are not alone. I stand, think, act, pray, and strategize with them as we seek to address a moral imperative. Kingsington, despite its richness and resilience, represents a global and local call to action for those who care about people and the future of the city of Philadelphia. As Kingsington goes, so goes Philadelphia. I rise today to say to the opposition from individuals that for over a decade, we have tried it your way. We have offered food, clothes, and counseling services, yet the problem in Kingsington still exists. We have calmly tried to get individuals into treatment and have done harm protection and support, yet the problem in Kingsington still exists. After we tried it your way for over a decade, the residents of Kingsington are still held hostage in their homes. While many of those in opposition can afford to go back to their privileged lives, there are people in Kingsington, the residents, have to live through this treacherous reality, and they're calling out for our unwavering support. It is now time to give our mayor, Sherrell Parker, and City Council's Kingsington Caucus the ability to lead differently. I would be remiss if I didn't say that Seventh District Councilwoman Lazada is a hero. She's going to lead us into something greater when it comes to this issue. To quote our police commissioner, Kevin Bethel, who made remarks about Kingsington several weeks ago, "Philadelphia, we won't be in this position this time next year." I'm confident in our police commissioner. I'm confident in our mayor. I'm confident in Councilwoman Lazada and the rest of the Kingsington Caucus to solve this issue. In too many quarters, Kingsington has become a code word for a community in free fall. Online and in the minds of too many people, Kingsington has become synonymous with the ills of modernity. I want to say it's a new day dawning. I'm completely supportive of the new direction that emphasizes both compassion and responsibility. In my world, and the rest of the world, most of the people we serve, there are twin towers of the problem solving, compassion and responsibility. One without the other is simply incomplete. It says, "I care about you but am willing to leave you unchallenged and unchanged." That somehow the state government cares more about you than you care for yourself cannot be the position. This is ultimately inhumane and does not transform people. People must be active agents in their own healing and transformation. And our city in Kingsington needs to transform desperately. I am reminded of someone in my own family who was active in their own healing and their own transformation. I'm reminded of one of my aunt's stories. My aunt, who struggled with addiction for several years, once came to my grandmother's house in North Philadelphia, strung out on drugs. My grandmother, a southerner from South Carolina, said, "Cuda," that was my mom's nickname, "don't let her in my house." It pained my grandmother not to let the daughter she loved for several years not to come into that house. But she knew that the only way to support her was not supporting her addiction. She knew that she wasn't raised that way, and my grandmother from the south was not going to tolerate that foolishness. My aunt at the time did not understand. She said, "Mommy, you won't let your own daughter in the house. How could you, mommy?" And my grandmother just looked and said, "Go do what you gotta do." If my grandmother would have let my aunt in that house, my aunt would not have graduated from college with two master degrees. If my grandmother would have let my aunt in that house, my aunt would not have been, become a great healthcare professional that she is today. I say to you all today that we have to stop enabling these people so they can be people like my aunt and understand that they have to be able to support themselves, and we're going to be there with them every step of the way. As policymakers, we must endow our policymaking with equal parts of compassion and responsibility. We must both act, we must act bold, nimbly, without paralyzing ideologies that in the past superseded reason, responsibility, experience, and human nature. That when we act aggressively, we are doing so out of love and sometimes fueled by the desperation of our neighbors who are forced to drive streets of Kingsington looking for their children, or mothers or fathers who have been sucked into an escapable web of addiction and modernity. Kingsington Caucus... Kingson Town Caucus, push us, bring us along, tell us what you and the communities represent and need. We're not here for Narberth. We're not here for the Ardmore, and we're not here for anyone else that is not, other than the residents of Kingson Town. We are with you. We stand with you, and you are our neighbors, and we're here to listen and do. We're here. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gardier.
Thank you, Council President. Um, first, I wanted to invite, um, all my colleagues and their staff to a briefing, um, and a report launch by Philadelphia Coalition, uh, for Affordable Communities on the state of affordable housing in the city. It will be happening immediately following, um, council, and lunch will be provided. Um, next, I wanted to just offer a few words about, uh, the late Michael Decker. Um, first, I want to express my sincere condolences to his family and friends and everybody who knew and loved him. Um, I think the thing that made me most sad about, um, his passing beyond the fact that he's not here is that I never personally got to tell him, um, how much I appreciated him and everything that he did, um, for this place, um, to keep it running and going. Um, and I just hope that he knew, um, how much all of us appreciated him, um, for his efforts and how instrumental he was to, you know, keeping City Hall running every day. And it also made me want to just say, um, a word of appreciation to all of the staff here. Um, we appreciate everything that you do, um, to keep our offices moving forward, to keep city council moving forward, um, and I hope that we can show each other that every day. Um, but I also wanted to say that, you know, when I think about how much Mike Decker gave to this place, um, it makes me also want, I hope that people realize that they're more valuable than the work that they produce, right? Um, on behalf of other people. Um, all of us are public servants, but all of us, at the end of the day, are whole people. Um, and I hope that we all realize that. And I hope that we continue to give a lot to the city of Philadelphia, but I also hope that we take the time to give to ourselves and to recognize that beyond the work that we do, we are valuable, um, because we're humans, um, and because, uh, we exist. And so, thank you, um, so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good afternoon, Council President. Um, similar to my, the energy of Councilmember Brooks, um, I don't normally do speeches on the floor, uh, but I have a lot to say. All right, so I'm gonna try to get through this as soon as possible. Y'all know I'm a big fan of lunch, right? So... Uh, first, uh, Mr. Decker, um, similar to Councilmember Gardier, um, great minds think alike. Uh, I, I was literally thinking about all of the staff, right? So we had a education committee hearing earlier in the week, and, um, I offered my condolences as well as the members of the education committee to Mr. Decker. Uh, but listening to Elizabeth today, she did a phenomenal job, and looking at the tech staff as well as the sergeant of arms, you know, um, I was on a panel recently, uh, listening to, um, an educator talk about the fact that, you know, often teachers spend more time with our children than we do because we spend so much time here. And you look up and we all spend so much time together, um, as a unit, as a council family, um, that you just never know, uh, not only when your number is gonna be called, uh, but you never know how these losses are gonna impact us. So of course, my condolences, uh, to Mr. Decker, but, uh, similar to the spirit of Councilmember Gardier, I really just wanted to say thank you to everybody who allows us to kinda sit here, stand here, you know, get all the credit for all this stuff that, um, you know, most of it we don't even think of ourself, right? We got great staff and great people around us who advise us and who recommend, uh, what we do in the best interest of the city. So my condolences to Mr. Decker. Great job, Elizabeth, but thank you to everybody who moves council forward. Um, Elaine is here today. Um, I don't know if she's still here. We've been here for a while, uh, but Elaine was the person who we wanted to recognize as our educator of the month, um, during public comments. She is here. Can we give Elaine a round of applause? She's still here? We, we, I talked about those teachers who spend so much time with our children and, um, Council President, I'm pretty sure that's your district, not only is she spending time, uh, with those children that we all love and care so much about, she also found time to represent the city of Philadelphia in the U.S. Olympics doing something that I would never do, uh, which is run a marathon. So thank you, Elaine. Uh, thank you for leading by example, and, um, of course, thank you for all you do, uh, for our children. A couple of quick announcements, and then I'm gonna get a little spicy, Council President, if that's okay with you. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, my colleagues, Councilmember Phillips, Councilmember O'Rourke, Councilmember Young. Um, it's not necessarily popular to talk about, uh, some of the things that they stand for, uh, but the most important thing, um, that I want to recognize them for today is the demographic that they represent. Um, on Monday, I had a chance to share the stage with the mayor. It was actually my first time sharing the stage with the new mayor. She's phenomenal. But I had an opportunity to look at the young black girls who seen Mayor Parker for the first time in person. And they didn't even have to say any words. Her presence, right? Where she's from, her story, it inspired them young sisters. And it got us thinking about what we can do because just like she's a sister from the city, we all are young brothers who live and represent in different parts of the city. And I commend each and every one of those council members for stepping up to the plate and deciding that we are going to fight one of the most important issues we have in 2024, which is getting young black men to participate in the democratic process. So, uh, uh, our goal in 2024 is 2024. We want to get 2,400 young black men registered and pledged to vote in this year's general election. And this is a bipartisan effort. We appreciate, uh, the Commissioner's office for joining us in this initiative, and we will continue to announce other efforts, events, and activities to get young black men educated, informed, and registered to vote. I also want to take a moment to announce that starting tomorrow, um, and you know, Council President, we're in a lot of meetings together, so I want to publicly thank Harrisburg, right? We're thanking our legislators in, in both the House and the Senate, and somebody please record this and put this out there because they say we don't thank them enough, uh, but I really want to thank them for what they did in, in acting and enabling the city of Philadelphia to be able to put up, uh, uh, more cameras to address issues around, uh, traffic safety, uh, traffic calming, and looking at what we need to do to keep cyclists safe, pedestrians safe, and, 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 and citizens across the city of Philadelphia. So I want to thank all of the district council members who've agreed to partner with my office. Um, this is a campaign that will be starting tomorrow, and we want to hear from constituents all across the city of Philadelphia, um, as it relates to where they think these cameras should go and what corridors in the city of Philadelphia are not safe and what we need to do as government to improve that. I'm getting towards the end, Council President. Um, I introduced the resolution today in recognition of Baba Joe Foster. Uh, anybody who knows me knows that I believe in African-centered education and African-centered pedagogy. And Baba Joe Foster, who while we were in council today, um, family, friends, and educators, uh, actually buried him this morning. And Baba Joe Foster, for those who don't know, was a prominent leader in African-centered education, not just in Philadelphia, but all across the country. He was one of the co-founders of the African-centered, uh, Public Charter School of P.A., uh, former principal at MOTEP. And, uh, just to get a little closer to home, actually taught with my father. For those who don't know, uh, my father was a teacher in the school district, uh, for over forty years. Um, and, and Baba Joe and my father, as well as, uh, Mr. Art Steinberg, who those, who those who might not know is the, uh, leader of the PFT, um, all of those folks, uh, worked together. And when we talk about standing on the shoulders of, of those who came before us, um, the entire African-centered community, um, the entire, um, education community mourns the loss of Baba Joe. Um, and I felt that it'd only be fitting on the last day of Black History Month that this city council body honors him, his work, and his le- legacy, and what he means to education and specifically African-centered education here in the city of Philadelphia. With the, in the spirit of Baba Joe, um, we know that we're having some issues as it relates to black-led institutions here in the city of Philadelphia, and, um, there are some decisions that was made around a specific school, math, civic, and science, that I've publicly and privately disagreed with. Um, based on the, the hand that we have right now, uh, as government, uh, we should feel obligated to step up for the families and the children at math, civic, and science and make sure that they have a soft landing. Uh, tonight, the school board of Philadelphia is gonna be making an important vote as it relates to what happens with the families and children involved in math, civic, and science and whether or not we'll be able to give those folks a soft landing as it relates to the possibility of transitioning as many staff members and families and pro- uh, in, in, um, stakeholders to the possibility of them being a part of the Global Leadership Academy, um, um, program. Uh, I will be at the board meeting tonight, Council President. Uh, I encourage anybody who cares about what's going on with those families to be at the board meeting tonight, and I emphatically ask the school board of the city of Philadelphia to please get this right. We need to make sure that the things that we can't control, that have put us in a position to have to make a tough decision, we have to do what's in the best interest of children. We have to do what's in the best interest of families, and we have to preserve what a lot of us call the pub. Math, civic, and science has done a great job of being a phenomenal brand in what we call the pub. And some of the things that they've done as it relates to protecting the integrity of the public league needs the opportunity to continue, and those journey, and that journey needs to, uh, uh, essentially, uh, move forward. And so, um, I'm, 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 I'm in a position right now where I'm somewhat frustrated. I'm extremely concerned, and I'm willing to do everything in my power as the Charity Education Committee to protect the families, the children, and those who are suffering from the unfortunate decisions that adults have made. We tried for months to get this right, and it's unfortunate that at the end of Black History Month, we've put ourselves in a position where some of the most vulnerable black people in the city of Philadelphia may become even more vulnerable because adults and government can't get it right. So I'll stop right there, Council President. I probably can give another fifteen-minute dissertation about this issue, um, but I'm gonna save that monologue for the school board meeting tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Councilmember, you sure you want another fifteen? Councilman Thomas, you good? Cause you can go. Floor is yours. Opportunity for majority speeches. At this time, I want to acknowledge Councilmember Rue Landau.
Thank you so much. I know it's been a long afternoon, so I will be quick. Uh, first, I want to shout out Philadelphia chef, Joy Parme Thomas, who has made remarkable contributions to Philadelphia's culinary scene. My resolution that I introduced today honors not only Chef Joy, but her accomplishments in Philadelphia's food scene and her advocacy for the well-being of food and hospitality workers. As we heard from her today, she is giving out free food in Concessing, and she needs to be honored. So during Black History Month, my office has been proud to lift up Philadelphia chefs who make our city the vibrant and exciting city we know it to be. Second, I'd like to, uh, thank my colleagues who co-sponsored and supported my new resolution to reopen the conversation around streeteries and sidewalk cafes. As a city renowned for its culinary diversity and innovation, Philadelphia's outdoor dining scene was a wonderful addition that benefited restaurants and visitors alike. However, the transition from emergency measures to permanent regulations has presented overbearing hurdles for many restaurant, restaurateurs. Through my new resolution, we aim to engage in constructive dialogue, identify areas for improvement, and pave the way for a more inclusive and thriving dining experience. At this critical moment, we have the opportunity to champion our small businesses and enrich, enrich our culinary landscape, especially as our city enters, uh, moves towards 2026. And finally, I'm excited to introduce the Consumer Protection Ordinance today. This ordinance, championed by Mayor Parker's administration, is a crucial step in combating unfair business practices and safeguarding the interests of Philadelphians. Philadelphia doesn't have a Consumer Protection Ordinance, and this ordinance gives our city the ability to act on the public's behalf to protect Philadelphians from unfair and unscrupulous business practices, fraud, and scams. By empowering our law department to swiftly investigate and act against deceptive practices, we send a clear message that fraud will not be tolerated in our city. From misleading financing to false product advertising, we are committed to protecting our residents from exploitation. I thank Mayor Parker for prioritizing this ordinance and each of you for your support. Let us continue working toward, uh, together to create a fair and secure environment for all Philadelphians. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, I want to congratulate, uh, Ms. Denise Ripley, uh, resident of the 5th Council District, um, in the 47th Ward. Um, you know, Ms. Ripley has taught me a lot, uh, about, um, her work in the past, um, her continued support, uh, for residents, um, in North Philadelphia and beyond. I also want to thank the stadium stompers. As a former staffer, I worked on, uh, that, that matter, uh, under Council President Darryl Clark, um, and their advocacy, um, you know, actually led me to take a trip down to New Orleans with Temple University to figure out if it was actually feasible for a stadium to be in North Philadelphia, um, which we concluded it was not. Uh, so thanks to the efforts of the stadium stompers for that. I want to thank Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for giving us the platform, um, to reach young men of color in the city, particularly black and brown, uh, men, um, because it is important that our issues, um, are pushed to the forefront of the city, uh, because it is us, uh, who are, um, jailed, uh, more frequently than others, and it is us who are murdered more frequently, frequently than others. Um, and so it is imperative that us, as the young leaders of this body, uh, to make sure that they see representation, um, in their city. I want to give my sincere condolences to the family of Michael Decker. Um, again, as a former legislative staffer, um, his insight was invaluable to me, uh, when I first started working here in this body as the legislative council, uh, to a former council president, Darryl Clark. Um, and I want to make sure that I acknowledge, uh, the passing of a former, uh, 5th District staffer, uh, Zenobia Harris, uh, who has worked in council for almost over thirty years, worked for, um, former Mayor John Street when he was council, councilman of the 5th District, and also for Council President Darryl Clark. Uh, she has, when I first started working for Council President Clark, I took over zoning duties, um, from her. Um, I was an attorney, so I knew the legal aspects of zoning, uh, but I didn't know the community side, um, and she taught me the community aspect of zoning, um, and she will forever be, uh, missed and forever have a place i- in my heart. Um, but what I want to speak on is, uh, last Friday, uh, was not just another day in the 5th District. Uh, it was a thunderous declaration of our community resilience and resolve. Um, as chair of the Streets and Services Committee, a member of the Committee on Commerce, Economic Development, and also a member of the Public Safety Committee, um, you know, my team, you know, led by this, uh, indomitable spirit of, uh, Benita Cummings, and in collaboration with community partners, uh, Mayor Sherrell Parker launched her first-ever Safe, Clean, and Green Tour in the heart of Strawberry Mansion on the 29th Street Quarter, uh, showing her commitment and dedication to North Philadelphia. Uh, we seized the moment, rallying together with fiery determination to reclaim our streets, our pride, and our future. Uh, we didn't just show her the blight, the short dumping, the nuisance businesses, uh, we thrust them into the spotlight, exposing the neglect, um, my constituents have endured for far too long. Uh, we didn't just point fingers, we pointed the way forward. Our initiative was a battle cry against the decay that has marred our streets, a rallying call to reclaim our neighborhoods from the grip of neglect, and let me tell you, our message was heard loud and clear. Uh, the Office of Clean and Green Initiatives, under the steadfast leadership of Carleton Williams, didn't hesitate. They pounced into action, coordinating city agencies, along with department heads such as streets, sanitation, commerce, building enforcement, and quality of life, along also with Department Authority, who I've never seen move this fast to remove abandoned vehicles. Essentially, um, you know, Parking Authority purged our streets, removing abandoned vehicles. Streets Department removed tons of debris. Uh, their swift response was a testament to our unwavering commitment. We will not tolerate neglect in our community, not now and not ever. Our community spirit soared higher with each eyesore removed, each blight banished. Last Friday wasn't just about cleaning up our streets, it was about unleashing a pothole. Last Friday wasn't just about cleaning up our streets, it was about unleashing the power of collective action and community pride. We stood shoulder to shoulder, a force to be reckoned with, united in our mission to build a better tomorrow. Our work has not, our work has only just begun. This is not the end. This was just an example of my unwavering commitment to the 5th District and the transformative power of our collective efforts. So, I'm urging all community members in the 5th District and beyond, that was just the first tour that we will have, but there will be many others. So, if you have a commercial corridor, if you have an area in your city that needs this type of rapid response, we will be there, but we need your support to keep it up. We can come through, remove the debris, but it's up to the community to maintain this effort, and we will provide you with all those necessary resources to maintain those efforts. So, Mr. President, I want to thank you for this time. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Ketsi Lazada.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take the opportunity to also extend my condolences to Michael Decker's family. He was someone who was very supportive of myself and my legislative team since the day I walked in the door, but also was very supportive of me as a chief of staff, walking into city government with no idea what government actually had to do, and he really provided his knowledge and his unwavering support. So, my condolences to all of his family. Please know that my family is keeping all of you in our prayers. And then I'd also like to take an opportunity to thank Councilmember Phillips. His district does not abut mine. His district does not abut any of us in the 7th Council District, but I am grateful for the fact that when there is a question, when he is not clear, when he connects with people on social media about the things that are happening as a result of the work that the Kensington Caucus is doing, or as a result of the work that I'm doing as an individual elected in the 7th Councilmatic District, he picks up the phone, he calls, he asks questions, he corrects me, right, if I need correction, and he also provides support and ideas and recommendations about how to further improve the quality of life for the residents of the 7th Council District. And so, I say that to say to all of my colleagues here, you know, the work that we are doing in the 7th Council District and through the Kensington Caucus will not be easy. The optics are going to be painful, and they are going to be challenging, but they are absolutely necessary, and I've said that many times. I invite you, my doors are open, my cell phone is always on, my text messages are always available. I invite you and your staff to sit with me, sit with the caucus, ask us questions. Don't take the things that you read in the paper or the comments that people make that oftentimes are not of those who live in that community. Don't take that as facts, because oftentimes they are not, and/or there is more information associated with that. My providers are being bombarded by calls from folks on this legislative body about wanting to provide support to them. We are grateful for that. We appreciate that, but please connect with us, because we are working. We are. I don't want them to be overwhelmed and confused and fear that they are doing something incorrect as a result of supporting us. And so, again, my doors are open, 484-63448 is our number. My staff and I are ready to provide the necessary information and the support. We may not agree, and it's okay, right? We may not agree, and it is okay, but we will be respectful to each other. I will always, always take what you say with respect, even if I don't agree. I'm here to serve. I'm here to serve alongside you, but my priority is my community, the people who live, work, and play in the Kensington Harrogate community. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. There are no more speeches on behalf of the majority. Before we adjourn, I just want to take a moment, again, as we continue to move forward the life and legacy of our beloved Michael Decker, give my condolences and prayers to his families, and want to take a personal moment to thank Wendy Prescott-Tate, as well as John Christmas, for just stepping up and working with the team and the Chief Clerk's Office, Elizabeth McCollum Nazario, and the rest of their staff, just to make sure that in the spirit of Michael Decker, we continue moving this great institution forward. And I thank all my colleagues for being patient with us through this process, but most importantly, just want to take a moment to acknowledge them as we continue to do the work on this great behalf, on behalf of this great city of Philadelphia, as well as John and his team, and Lopez and the Sergeant Aron's team, just making sure they stay available to all the staff and councilmembers during this period. So, I want to personally just say thank you, and at this particular time, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Council President. Before we adjourn, I just want to take a moment to announce that services for Mr. Mike Decker are as followed. Visitation will be Friday, tomorrow, March 1st, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:45 a.m. at Holy Innocence Church, which is at 1337 East Huntington Park Avenue and L Street and East Huntington Park Avenue, 19124. The actual funeral will be at the same location, Holy Innocence Church, and the funeral will start at 11:00 a.m. Again, visitation, 9:00 to 10:45, funeral service is 11:00 a.m. And with that being said, Council President, I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 7th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m.
It has been moved and property seconded. The council stand adjourned until Thursday, March 2nd, March 7th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great weekend.